Welcome. Thank you for coming this afternoon. Y'all look very colorful, and it's good to see you. I'd like to call the September 9th, 2025 City Council Special Meeting and Possible Executive Session to Order. City Clerk Ben Lane, can I have a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Lisa Borowski?
Present.
Vice Mayor Jan Daboskis?
Here.
Councilmembers Barry Graham?
Here.
Adam Quasman?
Kathy Littlefield?
Here.
Mary Ann McCollum?
Present.
And Solange Whitehead?
Here.
City Manager Greg Kaiten?
Here.
Interim City Attorney Louis Santaya?
Present.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews?
Here.
And the Clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ben Lane. Appreciate it. If it would please the council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please indicate your vote. Thank you. We will now recess into executive session. First, sorry for the delay. Appreciate your patience. We have recessed from executive session, and we now will turn to item two on the special meeting agenda. And item two is the request from city staff to adopt resolution number 13506, authorizing the interim city attorney and his respective staff and designees to file a complaint for declaratory judgment against the state of Arizona to challenge the legality and constitutionality of Senate Bill 1543. And I note that we've received numerous requests to speak.
Madam Mayor, should we start with the pledge?
No, because it's not the regular meeting. Don't throw me off. You're trying to confuse me. All right, that was easy.
Apologies.
It worked. We've received a lot of requests for public comment, but I'm going to ask for your courtesy in holding that until after the next couple of minutes here. And you can decide if you still want to speak. So I'm going to make a motion to vacate this agenda item, and for the reasons that I personally still have lots of questions about this. And I'll entertain a second, if there's one.
Second.
And vacating this will do the equivalent of canceling this agenda item tonight. So all those in favor of the motion on the table?
I wanted to speak to the motion on the table. I was hitting my request to speak, but it's not working.
I'll call for the point of order to go ahead and vote on the motion.
Point of order. May I speak?
I'll call the question, excuse me. All those in favor, please indicate your vote.
Wait, hold on. Point of order. We're calling the question now?
I called the question. All those in favor?
Yeah, there's a point of order. Madam Mayor, Louise, where are we at on this?
Generally, there would be discussion would be authorized and allowed before the motion should be voted on. The council as a whole could vote to shut down discussion, but at this point, I think Councilman Graham would be entitled to speak.
Councilman Graham, let's not debate it. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So Louise, do I have the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we spent a significant amount of time in executive session. Had a good discussion, and now we are out here, and you came to hear from us. And there are many people streaming from home, watching this on TV, and we've got an overflow audience with people across the street in the overflow, watching this on the television monitor across the street. I'm disappointed to say that we are, there's a motion on the table right now to vacate, which means to withdraw or retreat from the motion that you came for us to vote on tonight. I support the motion tonight. I support it for several reasons. One of the most important reasons I support it is because it gives us leverage in moving forward with negotiations. There are so many reasons. We have gotten hundreds and hundreds of emails from residents begging us with every kind of argument to hear this item, to hear public speakers, and to vote in the affirmative to protect citizens' right to referendum. Fundamentally, a vote to vacate is a vote for 2,000 apartments, 1,900 apartments, in North Scottsdale. There is no guarantee. There is no promise this is going to return to the council. This is an epically important item for this city council. I'm stunned right now and speechless that this is where we are. There are so many things that I wanted to share with you now, and I look forward to hearing from the public, to give us public comment. I look forward to posing questions in a public open forum of city staff and our legal experts about strategy and what this means. We have, I would guess, hundreds, if not thousands, of residents watching this right now, wondering what is going to become of their constitutional rights and what is going to become of their city. Over 27,000 residents signed a referendum to put this on the ballot, to give them a say about whether or not they want this apartment complex, which was passed in a lame duck session with five votes, four of which were not returning to the city council, their chance to have a say on it. Referendum is enshrined in our constitution. It is a basic constitutional right that I agree with everybody who's emailing us that they have a right to exercise. And so I am stunned, and I'm shocked that we are vacating this motion or withdrawing it, and I see that as a vote for this apartment complex. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Quasman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilman Graham is the greatest people's champion that this city has ever had. There are very, very few things, when it comes to his values, that I disagree with. I think it is incorrect, whole cloth, to say that adopting a specific strategy is the equivalent of supporting a gigantic apartment complex that many members on this rostrum is against, and a bill that is against, that we are against. And I, as a litigator, as somebody who is a civil litigator, who boasts government notices of claim as one of their areas of practice, and government claims, I want to be very clear to those at home that the black or white story is not correct. And my deep respect toward Councilman Graham in this instance is a difference of strategy, not a difference of policy. And I want to make sure that with the amount of due deference that Councilman Graham deserves, I entirely disagree with his assessment on this, and that lawyering is complicated, lawyering is hard, and the right outcome will come from this council that listens to the people.
Thank you, Councilman Quasman. Appreciate that.
Okay, Mayor.
Councilwoman Whitehead?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say that this is a vote to protect your tax dollars. This is a vote to make sure that the city government operates in a way that is not only protecting your tax dollars, but protecting your rights as citizens and your quality of life. So we don't act, we always act judiciously, and so we're not going to make decisions when we don't have full and complete information. And I do want to say that if the referendum was ever about the voice of the people, we would have already had a vote this past March. We had a citizen's petition demanding a vote, and these council members voted against giving you that chance to vote for or against this use of land. So here we are, and we'll just deal with it. We'll move forward in the best capacity we can, the best way we can, and we're not going to make rash decisions without full and complete information, which is why we're not making a decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Whitehead. And the reason I called the question is because I didn't, I know that Councilman Graham is entitled to his day. We know what it feels like to not be able to speak, coming from experience, on our first meeting. And so I sympathize with that, and while I'm glad that Councilman Graham said his piece, it couldn't have distorted the situation any further, any further. Well, I'm just going to speak to Councilman Graham, and that couldn't have distorted the scenario any further than he just did. We had a very long executive session discussion, which is confidential and shall not be repeated. As I opened by saying, this is the fact of this, my motion, and I will let Councilwoman Whitehead speak to her fact for seconding it, and anyone else that votes for it, on their own. There were too many unanswered questions on the next steps, steps, many options. I was not prepared to say, commit to direction, and that's it. So this story is not over, unfortunately, and for now, it's a, we're not going to make a decision on this agenda item. So with that, I will ask for Vice Mayor Daboskis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing that has been left unsaid so far tonight is that we value Axon. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for conducting business in the city of Scottsdale. We appreciate you. We value the tools that you bring to our community and to the world, and we hope to retain your business here in the city of Scottsdale. In my view, this vote is about SB 1543. It is not about our relationship with Axon. And to that point, I stand ready to fight for the citizens of Scottsdale right here, right now, tonight, and I hope my colleagues join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Daboskis. Excellent point. However, this isn't a vote either way, at this point, unfortunately. Too many unanswered questions, and I'll call for a That motion passes, and while this is a done issue for this evening, I would like to thank all of you for coming out, and we appreciate your passion, and this is a very critical issue for our community. And again, this was a decision on the legislation that will soon become law, and we appreciate you all being here. I think that, you know, if you have a compelling reason to speak tonight, please, please move forward. If not, this matter will come back around. I'm certain of it. Thank you very I am, we actually recessed briefly before the boards and commissions appointments. So I am going to call the council back to the dais and proceed with the four o'clock session of the meeting, which is the boards, commissions, and task force interviews and appointments. And for that, as is the protocol, I will turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Daboskis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city of Scottsdale is responsible for establishing city policies and enacting laws in support of those policies. The council relies on volunteer, citizen-based boards and commissions to research issues and make recommendations in support of the council's mission and goals. The information and recommendations provided by council-approved advisory boards is a valuable tool in helping council members in their deliberations. This afternoon, the city council will be appointing Scottsdale residents interested in serving on various boards and commissions. I want to thank the individuals for their willingness to volunteer their time in service to this community. Following the set of interviews, we'll vote on an appointment for the board or commission. As I call your name, please approach the podium to my right and briefly cover the following. For the record, please state your name, address, and how long you've lived in Scottsdale. Please tell us how your education, employment, or volunteer experience relates to this board or commission, and what is the top issue facing the board or commission. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. We have a timer by the screen to help you manage your time. Following each nominee's response, I will ask council members if they have any follow-up questions for you. Our first commission, the Airport Advisory Commission, there is one opening. The Airport Advisory Commission advises the city council on policy matters relating to the operation of the airport, proposals for development, airport area land use, fees, and safety concerns. There is one vacancy and four nominees. Fred Attarian has withdrawn from consideration. The nominees are Craig Bennett, David Gans, David McCartney, and John Sloan. I will now, oh, excuse me. So I will first call up Craig Bennett and then David Gans. There you go.
Councilmembers, my name is Craig Bennett. I've been a resident of Scottsdale for almost 13 years, originally from Los Angeles area. We escaped that area, and we're just working hard to be sure that Scottsdale doesn't end up like Los Angeles. I have firsthand experience of that. I attended University of Southern California, had aerospace aspirations for a while in engineering school. I ended up graduating in mechanical, BS in mechanical engineering, 1972. I went to work for, we have a family business utility trailer. We manufacture semi-truck trailers, have six plants around the country, one in Mexico, and we, so I've traveled extensively throughout North America, and to the detriment of your family at some point, but I did a lot of time in a lot of places that you don't see when you're touring, if you will. It's a good industry, and it's taught me a lot about how to apply manufacturing skills in the engineering world. And the airport commission, when I moved here, I wanted to get back to California, so I learned how to fly here in Scottsdale in two different flight schools. I got my private pilot license and my instrument rating here. And I've owned like six airplanes. I now have two jets parked in hangars at the Scottsdale Airport, and I did that so I could fly back to Southern California, because our business is still there. I was the one of the members of the family that left. Everybody else seemed to stay there. They love it there. There is a great beach there, if you haven't heard. Anyway, I think the issues of Scottsdale is growth and traffic at the airport level, landings and takeoffs. I'd like to see how the operations work at the airport from the inside. I've seen it from a user standpoint, and there are some issues that we can deal with. The challenges are going to be how to handle the traffic and what type of traffic we want, whether we want private training or charter, or what type of business we want, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. David Gans. After David Gans, we have David McCartney. David Gans. David McCartney, and then John Sloan. David McCartney? David McCartney?
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, I'm here. I'm online. You hear me okay?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. All right. My name is David McCartney. I live 111235 East Wingspan Way in Scottsdale. I've been a part-time resident for about five years and a full-time resident just since the beginning of the year. So it's my first summer. It's a little warm. My experience, I have an aviation management degree from Florida Institute of Technology, and I also learned to fly there. I intended to be a professional pilot. I currently hold an airline transport pilot rating. I have almost 8,000 flight hours, and I have a Cessna Citation that I keep at Jet Aviation. So I'm an active pilot. I retired last year after 42 years as an airline consultant. I designed baggage systems and security systems for airports throughout the world, relatively medium-sized engineering firm. I have a lot of general airport planning experience and very familiar with the Scottsdale Airport. I think that the biggest challenge that the airport faces today, and I share the view as the previous interviewee, is developing a master plan, a future, a vision for the future. Lot of great growth taking place, replacing hangars and infrastructure, but at the same time, we need to address capacity and who will be the main users, the principal users of the airport, and then how do we support all the tenants at the airport. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCartney. John Sloan?
Good afternoon. I'm John Sloan. I live at 10359 North 98th Street, Scottsdale, Arizona, and I've been there since 2002, so 22 years that I've lived there. I moved here, like I say, in 2002, and I have 40 years of aviation experience. 26 of it was in the United States Air Force. I had various sundry levels of that, both as a pilot, fighter pilot, and as a leader of squadrons and things of that nature for my whole career. Then I moved after that. I went into commercial aviation. I was an airline pilot for 16 years. And my last, my last job actually was as the Vice President and General Manager of Ross Aviation Incorporated, which was over in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Our company was, had eight airplanes of various types, and I was the Vice President and General Manager of that company. And I had a lot of experience in safety. While I was in the Air Force, I was, I attended the Chief of Safety School at the University of Southern California before I picked up my job as a Chief of Safety for an Atlas Air Force Base, which is a premier fighter base in the country. And it was really interesting because I got to give safety lectures. I got to give safety instruction to the commander of the base, and he took my advice one time and made a decision to do what it was, and I think we saved an accident because of that. I think that I can provide some valuable information and some valuable input to the safety of the Scottsdale Airport. I've flown in there many times with a neighbor and a friend who has, who has an airplane up in northern Arizona and used to fly down here, and we used to fly up to breakfast up at northern, up in the northern part of the state, and he let me fly his airplane, and that was it. And I, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Do we have David Gans? No, okay. I will now entertain a vote for the Airport Advisory Commission. Each council member can vote for one nominee. Councilman Graham?
Mr. Bennett?
Mayor Borowski? David McCartney?
David McCartney? David McCartney?
Craig Bennett.
And my vote is for Craig Bennett, and it looks like we have nominated David McCartney. Congratulations, Mr. McCartney.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The Board of Adjustments, we have one opening. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body that hears variance requests, appeals of the zoning administrators' interpretations, decisions, and decides on administrative decisions or zoning requirements, which create unnecessary hardships in the development of property because of exceptional or extraordinary conditions. There is one vacancy and two nominees. The nominees are Kenneth Erler and Martha West. Kenneth Erler may be participating this afternoon electronically. Do we have Mr. Erler? We'll ask Martha West to come speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Borowski and members of city council. I'm Martha West, and I'm a homeowner at 8244 East Chaparral. Since we moved to Arizona in the late 1980s, I've lived in Scottsdale for approximately nine years. My education and professional experience supports my application today. I hold a Bachelor of Applied Arts degree in urban and regional planning. I served the city of Scottsdale as a long-range planner, as the downtown planning manager, and as a redevelopment planner from 1988 through 2001. I served the city as a real estate specialist and as the real estate program manager from 2012 until 2021, when I retired. I also worked as a planning consultant in the private sector from 2001 to 2012. I have working knowledge of the city of Scottsdale zoning ordinance. I have experience in preparing and presenting variance cases before boards of adjustment. I understand Robert's Rules of Order governing Board of Adjustment meetings, and I have reviewed the Arizona Revised Statute rules governing the Board of Adjustment. I believe the top issue facing the board is that it is a quasi-judicial entity. Decisions can only be appealed to the Superior Court, so all board decisions must carefully follow statutory requirements and tests. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. West. Do we have? Do we have Mr. Ehrler? Okay. I will now entertain a vote for the Board of Adjustments. Each council member can vote for one nominee. Go ahead.
Before we vote, I just have a question for Clerk Ben Lane. Did we hear from the other candidate at all this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Borowski. Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Ehrler was on earlier. He had to leave for another meeting and we were hoping he'd be able to come back, but I believe he's still in the other meeting.
Okay. And for the record, we're about an hour behind, I think. No? Yeah. I guess we're not, are we?
Yeah.
An hour behind?
Yep.
So that's understandable. Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
So Councilwoman Littlefield?
Martha West.
Mayor Borowski?
Martha West.
Martha West. Martha West.
Kenneth Ehrler.
Huh?
I said Kenneth Ehrler.
Oh, Kenneth Ehrler, okay. Councilman Graham?
Ms. West.
And I'll also vote for Martha West. Congratulations, Ms. West. You have now been appointed. The Building Advisory Board of Appeals, there is one opening. There is currently one opening available on the Building Advisory Board of Appeals. However, we did not receive any applicants for consideration. The current opening will be included in the next cycle of board and commission appointments. As such, we'll move on to the next commission. Historic Preservation Commission, one opening. The Historic Preservation Commission oversees the development and management of Scottsdale's historic preservation program. There is one vacancy and one nominee. The nominee is Mark McCurdy. Do we have Mr. McCurdy today?
Honorable city council members. My name and address, Mark McCurdy. My home address is 8607 East Edward Avenue, Scottsdale. Please tell us how your education, employment, or volunteer experience relates to the board or the commission. I have served several years working at Frank Lloyd Wright's Innis, it was the Innis Brown House when I worked there. And I have an appreciation for mid-century modern architecture, including Ralph Haver and Frank Lloyd Wright. Designed up through the, just about 1960. And, just a second. There's the other local architect, his name is? Well, anyway, can't find it. So I love the mid-century architecture around here and I love the uniquely, the unique history of Scottsdale. I think our biggest challenge is preserving the cultural heritage and the character of Scottsdale. And so I would say that's a priority. What is the top issue facing? Oh, the other thing too, is as far as experience goes, I served on a city council and I've seen how out-of-control runaway development can destroy the history and integrity of the city. At one time, the city next door did a lot of redevelopment and lost its character entirely. So, including a lot of historical places that I miss. What is the top issue facing this board or commission? I would say being too much development, being overdeveloped, having too much density, having too much traffic, losing the character and the history of the city itself. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy.
Mr. McCurdy, you're the only applicant. You could have said anything you wanted.
[laughing].
You could have even taunted us or said something derisive and we would have had to appoint you. Thank you.
All right. So Mayor Borowski?
Mark McCurdy. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. McCurdy. You have been appointed.
No, we have to all vote.
Oh, all right.
But we are going to vote for Mr. McCurdy. So thank you, but we each have to do it.
I'm going to suspend the vote and just appoint.
By acclamation. All right. Thank you. Library Board, we have one opening. The Library Board advises the city council on general policy relating to programs, services, and future development of the Scottsdale Public Libraries. The Board oversees the library's special revenue fund, which is made up of donations and funds generated through the sale of used books and magazines. There is one vacancy and four nominees. Patricia Pellet has withdrawn from consideration. The nominees are John Grossclose, Mary McBride, and Monica Sonnenklar. I'll ask John and then Mary McBride to come forward.
Sorry about that. I sat on the wrong side. My name is John Grossclose. I was born at St. Joseph's Hospital in downtown Phoenix, more number of years ago than I'm going to mention here. I've lived in South Scottsdale for coming up on 30 years. I'm one of those vanishing rare natives that people like to talk about us. I went to ASU West for my degree in interdisciplinary arts and sciences. I currently work as a network engineer. I currently serve on a board for an autism-only academy in South Scottsdale. I've previously served on other boards, including amateur radio clubs and a few other things. I understand organization. I understand technology. I know Robert's Rules. And I think the number one thing that people fail to understand about the library system is exactly what it does and what it's for. It's not just for books.
Any questions? Go for it. Tell us in your opinion what it is for.
It's a place to get out of the heat.
[laughing].
It's a place for activities for kids during the summer. It's a place to use a computer to fill out your job applications if you don't have internet at home. It's a place to look up forms that you might need for other parts of your life. There are so many things that a library does other than just loan books.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name's Mary McBride. I live at 6841 East Virginia Avenue, Scottsdale, Arizona. I've been in Scottsdale 35 years. My family has made good use of the Scottsdale Public Library countless times for many varied activities and quests. For over 20 years, I worked at Scottsdale Unified School District, teaching and coaching students. I earned a Master's in Education with an emphasis in media and technology. I've taught civics, English Language Arts, Media Studies, and Social Studies, as well as desktop publishing and other courses. I facilitated student governments and the National Junior Honor Society right within the schools. I spent 17 wonderful years sponsoring the Future City Competition at the middle school level. This competition is an international engineering competition that focuses on improving students' math, engineering, and science skills. And the students and I worked with volunteers, engineers from the community to bring students into the knowledge about how they would like to live in the future and what they are capable of doing and changing so that we have a sustainable future. This competition opens one's heart and mind to the real world. It is of paramount importance to note that the funding is a prominent aspect and concern of any organization, especially one that is serving the public. Our public libraries are no exception. They're vital and necessary parts of this city's daily purpose and serve a significant function in the quality of life here. Our entire community uses our libraries for resources, research, as well as for enjoyment and respite. Citizens need our libraries as they provide value that no other places can provide, meaning reading materials, wireless communication, kind people who help, quiet, study areas with no clutter, and countless other services. They provide programs for all ages. Every person in Scottsdale is a stakeholder in keeping our libraries vibrant. For this reason, the Library Board could include people from all walks of life so everyone had a voice and a way to communicate and advocate for their needs. A Library Board has an outstanding opportunity to find avenues to ensure that our libraries secure the appropriate funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Monica Sonnenklar and I am at 134th and Shea in the beautiful Sonora Vista neighborhood. And I've been in Scottsdale now, coming up on five years, and I'm loving it and my kids love it and we are loving the library. So I'm very passionate about this library system in Scottsdale. When we moved here, we couldn't believe there was a drive-through library. Oh my gosh, that was amazing. So we see the library definitely at least three times a month, if not more. My kids check out the maximum amount of books. We use all of the resources of the library. But one thing we've done is bring our friends to the library. So one of the things I think the library could use is more school kids at the library because it's not a boring place. We don't want it to be sterile. We don't want it to be a place where you have to study, be quiet. We want the library to be a place that is alive with the literature of American literature, literature from all over the world. We want our kids to love literature. And that's what a library is about. But we're competing with technology. We're in a digital age, so how do we do that? Which applauds the library, that they did their website. It is new. I love it. I can see so much. There are so many resources for everything you need to know about Scottsdale. And I think that it is really well done. So that was just a great, refreshing thing. And to be able to be on the board would be just a way to really cheer on our libraries and really make them come alive. We all have a childhood book that really spoke to us, whether it was Curious George or whether it was, you know, Caps for Sale. And think of your adult books. I talk to adults who are in trilogies of books and, oh my gosh, you have to read this and that. Let's make the library a place where it's not just for boring books. It's a place where you can go and immerse yourself in, whether it's work, whether it's a study space, whether it's maybe a print shop, maybe it's a storyboard workshop, maybe it's a writing workshop for all of our amazing elementary schools here in Scottsdale. Let's bring that to our library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a vote for the Library Board. Councilwoman Whitehead?
I agree with all three of you. Great presentations. I really, really, it's exciting to have so many good people. I'm going to go ahead and cast my vote for Mary McBride and encourage everybody to stay in the pool.
Agreed. Mary McBride?
Proud to cast my vote for Monica Sonnenklar.
Councilman Graham?
Ms. Sonnenklar?
Ms. Sonnenklar?
And I will vote for Monica Sonnenklar. Thank you to all the applicants. Great job.
And I'll cast my vote for Monica Sonnenklar as well. Congratulations, Mrs. Sonnenklar, you've been appointed. And thank you to all of our applicants. Tourism Development Commission, two hotelier openings. The Tourism Development Commission advises the city council on matters concerning the expenditure of revenues from the transaction privilege tax on transient lodging bed tax designated for tourism development. There are two vacancies and two nominees. The nominees are Stephen Miller and Alex Shelton. Stephen Miller may be participating this afternoon electronically. Do we have Stephen Miller?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Apologies, I'm on a work, I apologize, I'm on a work trip. So my name is Stefan Miller. I live at 7215 East Silverstone Drive. And I've been in Scottsdale for almost two years. In my 29 years of hotel world, I've lived in amazing tourism-dependent destinations, Whistler, San Francisco, Sonoma Wine Country, Hawaii. And I really feel that I have been instrumental in selling the destination and understanding the destination, understanding what makes the destination. So the challenge that I see, or the biggest opportunity I see, is really creating things or advising the council to create things that touch all stakeholders. So residents and travelers or tourists. You know, how do we create things that create longevity? You know, whether it's an event or a physical or infrastructure support. And we also have the issue of Scottsdale obviously being very long. So how do we target all areas of Scottsdale, not just focusing in one area? And also, not all areas are accessible. So how do we solve that? So those are my, those are my opportunities that I see for this council.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you. Alex Shelton?
Hi. My name is Alex Shelton. I'm Director of Sales at the Adaro Scottsdale. We're on the east side of Scottsdale. Our property is going to be going about a $30 million renovation, where we're adding more meeting space, restaurants. So we're pretty significant with the amount of money we're putting into this community. So we care quite a bit about what goes on moving forward. My background's been with major hotel properties, first in Las Vegas. In Las Vegas, we have always been able to be a chameleon. We change. We change, we change quickly, and we're very dynamic in when we do it. And the fact of the matter is, is that right now is we're coming off of the worst summer and probably the worst year we've had in the hotel business since about 2008. It is a crucial time for us to make adjustments and changes to move into 2026. Markets that are around us are suffering double-digit losses, so it is a crucial time period for us to plan. My background, besides on the Vegas side of it, I've spent years in the DMO world, Vice President of the Albuquerque CVB. I've also been the Vice President of Meetings and Convention Sales for the Ecuador Tourism Board, for the Columbia Tourism Board. I'm the Director of Marketing for the United States for the Israel Ministry of Tourism for three years. And I also have worked for Hilton and for Marriott in various parts of the country. The biggest challenge that the Scottsdale faces is a unique challenge, but it's also something that can be easily solved. There are many people who put Scottsdale into their Expedia or into Hilton or into Marriott. And you'll be surprised to find out how few Scottsdale hotels actually show up and search. So you're losing tax revenue right off the bat when somebody chooses to stay in Tempe or they're staying in Phoenix because they're perceived to be closer than most hotels in Scottsdale actually are to a center point. So there's a change that can be made that can actually grow tax revenue that's all controlled by Scottsdale. So that's right off the bat, a change that I would like to be able to bring to the table. But there's a lot of opportunities, I think, that Scottsdale can offer. And these adjustments, I think, this Bureau and Board can make to make a big difference.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Any questions?
I'll just say thank you for your investment of $30 million in your property. Thank you very much for investing in Scottsdale. We have two openings and we have two applicants. Do we have a vote by acclamation to accept these two applicants?
So move.
Second.
All right. Thank you. You have been appointed. This concludes our appointment process for today. I would like to thank all our nominees for their interest in serving on a city board or commission. We're fortunate to continue to receive qualified applicants for the positions on our boards and commissions. Even if you were not appointed today, your application will remain on file for consideration at a future date if there are additional vacancies. City staff will contact the individuals appointed this evening and provide them with information on the next steps regarding their appointment. The city of Scottsdale is very fortunate to have such dedicated and talented individuals who are willing and ready to serve our city. Thank you to each and every one of you for coming out today. We appreciate you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. At this point, we have concluded our special meeting and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. That concludes our special meeting. So I'm going to roll right into the general, or the regular meeting. I'd like to call the September 9, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting and Work-Study Session to order. City Clerk Ben Lane, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Lisa Borowski?
Present.
Vice Mayor Jan DeBoskis?
Here.
Councilmember Barry Graham, Adam Quasman, Kathy Littlefield, Marianne McCowen?
Present.
And Solange Whitehead?
Here.
City Manager Greg Caton?
Here.
Interim City Attorney Louis Centea?
Here.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews?
Here.
Acting City Auditor Lay Clough?
Here.
And the Clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Scottsdale Police Officers Schalock and Lee Hender, as well as firefighter Andy Taylor. If anyone requires any assistance, please let the staff know. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to turn that over and be led by Vice Mayor Jan DeBoskis. Thank you very much. Okay, tonight's invocation will be led by Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all. I am going to do something a little different tonight with the invocation. I would like to speak about one of the people who worked for us for many, many years and who recently passed away, Rommel Cordova. Tonight, it is my unhappy and solemn duty to formally inform you of the death of Rommel Cordova. He worked for many years in the City Clerk's office, and we all knew him for the kind and generous person that he was. Rommel passed away on September 1st from a massive and unexpected stroke. I would like to inform the council that I was given the opportunity at the annual Arizona Clerks Association meeting on July 22nd to personally express our council's mutual thanks to Rommel for all that he did to help us over the years. He was there and he heard it from all of us. Thank you, City Clerk Ben Lane, for giving me that opportunity. Rommel was a very active person and assisted us all, not only at the city of Scottsdale, but also at the statewide City Clerks Organization. And he was recognized at that meeting for that help. I give you one more example of how giving and caring this young man was. Even after death, he still gave of himself, quite literally, by donating body parts to those in need and whose lives he could still make better. At last count, I believe, I heard there were 75 people who received help from Rommel in this way. Rommel, know that during your life and after your life, you made a difference. Tonight, I ask you to remember this young man and all that he has done in his short life to help others. I know of no one he turned away who asked for help. Please join with me in a moment of silence in prayer and remembrance for this good man. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Littlefield. And Rommel will certainly be missed. As in for the mayor's report, I, we're issuing, I am issuing a proclamation tonight, but I'm going to ask for Vice Mayor's help tonight in presenting this, because I have a stress fracture in my foot. So, I'd rather not walk down there and take a picture in this big funky boot that I'm wearing. If you would do the honor. And would you like to go ahead and read this?
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure. Thank you. City of Scottsdale, Office of the Mayor, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer-related death among women in the United States, and the American Cancer Society estimates that in 2025, approximately 2,890 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer and 12,730 will die from the disease nationwide, including an estimated 470 new cases and 330 deaths in Arizona. And whereas a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is approximately 1 in 91, and her lifetime risk of dying from the disease is approximately 1 in 143, and whereas due to vague, nonspecific symptoms and the absence of a reliable early detection test, the majority of women are diagnosed at stage three or later, when the cancer has already spread beyond the ovaries. And whereas although the five-year survival rate for stage one ovarian cancer exceeds 90%, only 15% of cases are diagnosed at this early stage. For those diagnosed in later stages, the five-year survival rate drops below 30%. And whereas while screening tools such as mammograms and Pap tests exists for breast and cervical cancers, no equivalent screening test exists for ovarian cancer, making awareness of symptoms and risk factors essential for early intervention. And therefore, our Madam Mayor Lisa Borowski of the Mayor of City of Scottsdale does proclaim September 1 through September 30, 2025, as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Scottsdale. And she encourages everyone to participate in month-long events and activities in our 49 parks, and remember to thank our parks and recreation professionals for the essential services they provide. And witness thereof, she has here on two, set her hand and caused to be affixed the Seal of the City of Scottsdale, and it's signed Lisa Borowski, Mayor of Scottsdale. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I really appreciate you taking that over. And I understand we have someone here to receive it, but, oh, there she is. And remind us of your name. I'm sorry, it's not in my notes. Rachel? Peppman? Rachel Peppman. Thank you very much.
This evening, we have two presentations, and they are Boards and Commissions. First, we're going to start with the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy, who will provide an overview of the organization's key points, statistics, and service areas. Presenting tonight is Mike Roberts, McDowell Sonoran Conservancy interim Chief Executive Officer. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. It's great to, that you invited us here to, to talk about the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy. And do I have to say next slide? Or can I do this here? I can do it here. Oh, I have full control. Thank you. So, the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy, we're an independent nonprofit and mostly donor-funded. A lot of, we of course do have a very special relationship with the city of Scottsdale, but at the same time, we are massively donor-funded. We're volunteer-driven, so you've probably seen and heard all about us stewards in the Preserve and elsewhere. But we do have a small processional staff at the, at the heart of that. We, our movement really represents an investment in Scottsdale and its future. Our mission, a thriving Sonoran Desert for future generations. We're not here just for today. We like to think we're here to actually ensure that all our descendants and everyone who comes to Scottsdale will enjoy this for years, for decades to come. We lead conservation in the McDowell Sonoran Preserve, enhance community well-being through stewardship, science, and education. Our home, of course, the McDowell Sonoran Preserve, a very fragile, but a very special environment. And as you may know, there are 400, there are 400 native plants there, 400 native plant species, 122 bird species, 30, 30 animal species, 40 reptiles and amphibians, and absolutely countless insects and spiders. The environment says fragile because it is susceptible to heat and to drought, and also, of course, to fire. We, our history, of course, goes back to 1995, when the Scottsdale voters decided to create the Preserve, overwhelmingly approved the sales tax measure. And our part of that was to, to say really, if, if the city buys it, we'll look after it. And we've been doing that ever since with our steward organization alongside the city, 650 volunteer stewards. Last year, we donated over 72,000 hours of, of service, which the city values at $2.4 million. We also, which people forget, is we also talk to 130,000 visitors in the Preserve every year. To actually represent, probably one in five people that visit the Preserve actually talk to us. We offer guided hikes, bike rides, and walks with an educational focus, and with a face of the city and the conservancy in, in the Preserve. So, you'll see our experts at the trailheads. The, two or three years ago, we started to focus more on the visitor experience. So, anyone who comes to the trailheads gets an expert to talk to, to help them guide them safely and to enjoy and get the most out of their excursion into the Preserve. In fact, we were featured recently. Scottsdale Fire Chief said that if it wasn't for the stewards being at the trailheads advising our, advising visitors and residents, then we might have more casualties because of heat in the Preserve. And we were featured on easy family news. At the core of what we do is the science. So, ultimately, we have 10 ongoing science projects in the Preserve ongoing because we can track year after year any changes. Those focus on plants, animals, and we monitor animal populations. But that's at the heart of what we do. And then, let's go deeper in one of those. For instance, mitigating invasive species. Invasive species is something we talk about a lot these days because of the impact on invasives forcing out endemic species. Excuse me. But what we do is map where they are. Our stewards around the Preserve, we map where they are. We identify ways of removing them. And we work with the city to do it ourselves, or, or bring in contractors to do that. We also publish results for other agencies around the state and other places, and we share that information, which is vital, because ultimately, fires are actually getting more frequent. And invasives, more invasives unfortunately bring fire risk. You know, you remember in 2023, 24, we did have some up close and personal fires, which were actually encroached on the Preserve. So, our activities focused then on restoration a lot as well. And we go into burned areas, excuse me, we harvest seeds from healthy plants. We go into burned areas and we distribute seed balls. We throw thousands of, in fact, into burned areas to regenerate. And we have 200 sawhills, actually, we've grown with the help of Scottsdale Community College. So, this whole restoration effort is not just us, it's a whole volunteer force and involving the community as well. Then we monitor what happens from there. Would you believe, we monitor down to the individual sawyer and the individual cactus. So, we make sure that they actually do restore. By the way, one of our science professionals has been with us for six years. She's one of those people who's now become an authority on restoration in the desert. Animal populations, you will see, if you're fortunate, you'll see tortoises in the Preserve occasionally. There's not many of them, but they're out there. Some of them have telemetry on their back, which looks a bit strange, but we do monitor where they go, because they're one of these indicator species. So, if we see them wandering around the Preserve, if we know where they've been, we understand that that's a healthy environment. The other long-term species we also monitor, we have 60 wildlife cameras, by the way, around the Preserve. You won't see them mostly. They're tucked away in places where many animals go. But again, they're in the same places year after year. So, we build up a picture of the way that animals actually migrate. And then what we do is recycle that, that knowledge into education. So, we focus on natural and human history. People are often amazed that there's been humans in the Preserve since, what, 8,000 years ago? So, we talk about geology, plants, animals. But we also, of course, go into experiencing the desert safely. And of course, we have an active youth education program too. Beyond the Preserve, a few years ago, we also realized that a lot of the community can benefit from our education and learning. Unfortunately, that's been well-received by many HOAs, community groups. So, we have regular presentations. You'll find us at libraries. We also have a growing partnership opportunity where we talk to major HOAs about their sustainability, if they have, if they have that type of program. One of those that does is DC Ranch, actually, where there is a very active sustainability program, and we're involved in advising on that. We bring a deeper understanding of the desert, outside of the desert as well. And we look at enhancing the Scottsdale experience for visitors, whether they might be individuals, they might actually be company retreats. We take them all into the Preserve safely. The other thing we have is the Tour to Scottsdale. We were gifted that a few years ago, and we're now coming up to our third year of the tour. This brings 3,000 participants and their, and their significant others into Scottsdale. It's becoming a large cycling event. It's been great to have the support of the city in putting this together. And of course, for us, it is a significant fundraiser. So, next year, it's going to be on March 28th. And we, we expect, we hope, we'll build ridership even more. Overall, therefore, we, we look at the conservancy as not just protecting, preserving the McDowell Sonoran Preserve, but also inspiring a healthy lifestyle in Scottsdale. With, with our interactions on the trails and outside, you know, we, we can help guide people to get their maximum out of their visit here and also out of living here. And as you'll notice, I'm not from around here, but I have been actually in the USA for 30 years. And we had the Scottsdale experience and moved here six years ago just because of that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've lived here all my life, and I know a lot about the Preserve. But that was a wonderful illustration. I actually learned quite a bit from you. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And Councilwoman Whitehead.
Yeah, I'll just say a few remarks. Thank you. Thanks. Great presentation. This organization does so much. You really compiled it into a short presentation. I want to call out the organization's first executive director. Carla is here. So, we should all clap for her. And thank you also for mentioning the work of Scottsdale Community College. I encourage everybody to go there to see the incredible work they do. But again, thank you. Great presentation. Love. We should all be supporting McDowell Sonoran Conservancy. Thank you.
And, and one more thing, Mike. Are you going to stick around?
Yes.
For the meeting? It's interesting. I don't know that this was planned, but we have a press, a work study on wildfire mitigation.
Right.
And you touched on that. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for your, you know, the conservancy to work with Scottsdale Fire. So, it'd be great to have you stick around.
Sure.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Hopefully, you don't have big dinner plans. Okay, good. All right. Moving right along. Second presentation is regarding our employee recognition program, which we're just launching. Is that correct, Mr. Corset? This is the first?
Madam Mayor, this is the first of this particular component of that program, yes.
Yeah, excellent. And where City Council, this council will recognize employees who have dedicated 20 or more years of service to the city of Scottsdale. And presenting tonight is our very own Kelly Corset. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Borowski, members of the city council. This is the first of what will be a monthly occurrence, a new addition to our Employee Years of Service Recognition Program, through which we thank our staff who are achieving those milestone anniversaries every five years, working with the city of Scottsdale. On those anniversary dates, employees receive a token of the city's appreciation. At five years, it's a, an anniversary coin. In fact, you receive an anniversary coin every five years as you move up the chain. But you get more gifts the more senior you become. So, at 20 years, for example, each employee receives a Solari bell, not quite as large as the ones hanging in the back corner of the Kiva, but a wonderful, yet smaller representation of the Solari bell, as an example. So, those are the sorts of things that we do to honor our staff. Until now, that's all been contained within our organization. And so, tonight, we're very pleased to honor employees who have dedicated 20 or more years of service to the city of Scottsdale publicly. To my colleagues who are achieving those anniversary dates, I'd like to say that your service represents more than time. It reflects commitment, leadership, and an enduring impact to our community. So, Sam, if you could put on the screen, this month, this is the full list of staff achieving 20 or 25 years of service with the city of Scottsdale. Tonight, three of our colleagues are able to join us. And so, I will ask them to come down for a special moment of public recognition. That's Michael Andrews with the Scottsdale Police Department, celebrating 25 years of service with the city. Craig Taylor from Facilities Management, also celebrating 25 years of service to the city. And Chris Watson, also from the Scottsdale Police Department, celebrating 20 years of service. Hold your applause for one more moment, please. Because of you, Scottsdale's not only a great place to live and to visit, but also a great place to work. We thank you for your decades of service, your loyalty, and the difference you continue to make every day. And I also see Michael Kirin, who I didn't get on my RSVP list, but we're very pleased to see you here as well, Michael, celebrating 20 years of service to the city of Scottsdale. So, Mayor, I know you're playing injured tonight. So, if you can't make it down for the photo, we understand. So if you can't make it down for the photo, we understand. But I would ask those of you who are able to come down and stand with our colleagues here for a photograph, to do so now while the public showers them with applause.
All right. First public comment announcement. Well, I'll give the executive session announcement also. During tonight's meeting, as is always the case, council may make a motion to recess into executive session to obtain legal advice on any applicable item on the agenda. If authorized by the council, the executive session will be held immediately and will be closed to the public. The public meeting would resume following that executive session if one was to be had. I don't think there's one coming up here, so we'll move on to public comment announcement. This round of public comment is reserved for Scottsdale citizens, business owners, and/or property owners to comment on non-agendized items that are within the council's jurisdiction. No official council action can be taken on the items that are discussed or speakers discuss in this section of the program and are limited to three minutes to address the council. If you wish to speak on a non-agendized or an agendized topic, please see the city clerk because there's still room. And I'm going to call off names, all of the names. We have four speakers on non-agendized items. Steve Sutton will kick us off, Jason Alexander, Dan Isak, and John Conwizer. I hope I said that right. So Steve Sutton, please.
Steve Sutton, address on record. Good evening, Honorable Lisa Borowski, Mayor of Scottsdale and other council members. It's been over forty years since the first time I took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. The first time. All Scottsdale council members take a similar oath that requires them to support, bear true faith and allegiance, and defend the constitutions of the United States and Arizona, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of their office. Taking that oath is not just a ceremonial procedure for council members. It is also an acknowledgement that they must comply with Scottsdale Ordinance 3675, otherwise known as the Ethics Code. At the July 2nd, 2025 council meeting, the city attorney gave the opinion that the Nextdoor social media site is, quote, "probably not within the jurisdiction of the city of Scottsdale," end quote. My attorney and I disagree with the city attorney. When Nextdoor is used by a council member to post misinformation on public matters within the city council's jurisdiction, or when a council member, the Nextdoor post is used by a council member in what appears to be an attempt to justify using police or city staff for political retaliation, those Nextdoor posts and any consequences definitely are within the city council's jurisdiction. This is an email dated Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, from a Scottsdale Police Sergeant, reporting to Assistant Chief of Police Watson about Nextdoor posts. The sergeant writes, quote, "Councilman Graham wants us to talk to Mr. Sutton about continuously commenting on his posts. We advised Councilman Graham legally, we can't do that, as it is his First Amendment right, and there is no crime," end quote. Councilman Barry Graham, in an act of political retaliation, attempted to suppress my First Amendment right to protest his actions by using the Scottsdale Police to intimidate me. Councilman Barry Graham has a history of unethical behavior. I believe Councilman Graham knew what he was asking the police to do, violated his oath of office. Please remember, it's only been after I began opposing Councilman Barry Graham on the building of a garage extension in historic Old Town that Barry Graham and his proxies began attacking me on social media with derision, name-calling such as "skinhead," "hate monger," and an attempt to intimidate me by using the Scottsdale Police Department. Councilman Graham is not, I repeat, is not faithfully and impartially discharging his duties of office. I ask the city council to make a statement of disapproval of Councilman Barry Graham's actions. Thank you, Mayor Borowski.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Jason Alexander.
Jason Alexander, address on record. At the last city council meeting I attended on July 2nd, I was shocked and frankly really disgusted as a citizen of Scottsdale by the unprofessional and intimidating behavior of Councilman Barry Graham. Mayor Borowski had made a ruling on an issue. And rather than accepting the ruling like a professional, Mr. Graham proceeded to glare and glower at Mayor Borowski for fourteen seconds. I have a video I'd like to play. If the team would play that now for me, please. Look at Mr. Graham. Fourteen seconds of staring down Mayor Borowski. This is a clip zoomed in. I apologize for the quality. You can see the intimidating glare and the attempt, I believe, to bully. This went on for fourteen seconds. It was incredibly unprofessional. It would absolutely never be tolerated in the workplace. And I'd like to know why it is tolerated here. I dare say that I do not believe Mr. Graham, and if I could have the overhead for a moment, please. I do not believe Mr. Graham would give that look to David Ortega. I do not believe Mr. Graham would give that look to Jim Lane. I believe Mr. Graham is taking advantage of the fact that he is a head taller and a hundred pounds heavier than Mayor Borowski to attempt to intimidate her in a chauvinistic and obnoxious manner. I believe if one was out in public and Mr. Graham was looking at one's wife, one's girlfriend, one's daughter that way, there would be a very negative reaction on behalf of the person who was receiving this look. But the more important note is that, once again, this is another example of toxic and unprofessional behavior by Barry Graham. He has been found guilty of violating the city's Ethics Code. He has four open-meeting law complaints against him. He has been found to have filed a false criminal complaint with the county attorney against Mayor Borowski. Mr. Graham has rejected multiple citizen petitions. He's constantly interrupted his colleagues by going, "point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order." And not just once, not waiting to be recognized, but in attempts to shout them down. And finally, of course, Mr. Graham shows complete disrespect for the people in the audience and for his colleagues by constantly using his electronic devices during meetings, communicating with his advisor, Rod Pritchett up there, the older gentleman with blue hair. There's a reason our council has become known for toxic and dysfunctional behavior.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have, wait, where's my list? Where's my list? Oh, here we go. You're already up there. Oh, sure. Dan Isak was next. Let's go. Let's go with John. Thank you, John. Conwizer. Conwizer, excuse me. What is this for? Oh, all of us?
I am indeed, John Conwizer. Lives at 7423 Arroyo Hondo, which is in the Boulders Community in North Scottsdale. And we live there about thirty-four years. That's our primary and only home. And I am, my purpose in addressing you is to try to preserve Scottsdale Road as a scenic corridor, which was designated. The city has spent lots of money very properly landscaping it and taking care of Scottsdale Road, which is overrun on the weekends with these paper signs, especially the red and white one for a barber shop. And when one fellow comes in, then low and behold, this comes in for Christmas lights and this comes in for whatever it says there. You can read it, and on and on. There used to be a committee in the city, of which I was a member as a volunteer for many years, that had the authority to remove these paper signs and deposit them in a certain place down by the waterworks. And for whatever reason, that committee was dissolved. And I have kind of taken it on myself in North Scottsdale to patrol Scottsdale Road and work with the people that are violating the law. I've also spent considerable time with Ken Ross, who is an employee of the city in the code department. And Ken does not work on Saturday and Sunday. And these folks realize that there's no, excuse me, what, policing, if you will, on the weekends or the signs go up. I talked to Rick Van Nisewela, who is head of your department, I believe. And he does not have the funds, manpower, whatever, to monitor Scottsdale Road on the weekend. I suggested he get in touch with your police department and maybe they could afford to send one patrol car of Scottsdale Road, let's say, to Carefree Highway, making U-turn and go about his business after that. Because they then will take the policeman's word that these signs were out. I volunteered to do it. But Rick said that my words to you and himself and so forth can't be taken at full value and so on and so forth, which I can understand. No personal insult intended. So I would hope that you could get some program in mind that would tell the community that these ugly, distracting, insulting signs are interrupting the Sonoran Desert, which is the main reason we all moved here, not to see these signs. And do yourself, the community, a great deal of good. I'm willing to work with you. I think you have my phone number, the city clerk does. And if we can accomplish that, it would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. If you wouldn't mind staying there for one minute. City Clerk Ben Lane, I wanted to point out that so you could put it under the Elmo so we can see what he's referring to on the streets. Sorry, I was trying to do sign language across the room. It didn't really work out. And this, John, John, this is an example you gave to us.
I'm sorry, I can't. I'm totally deaf.
He, he put the sign up here. Here, you, you can stay there. That's an example of what you're talking about, the tent signs on Scottsdale Road. Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Ben. Next, we have Dan Isak.
Dan Isak, address on record. I stand before you mildly jet lagged and also facing the wrath of delaying my spouse's birthday dinner for a few days so I could speak about more bad behavior by our city council and a couple of staff members. So I was out of town for five weeks, but I was shocked and dismayed by the fiasco around the proposed amendment to our general plan, the general plan that was voted on by a majority of Scottsdale residents. It appeared onto the agenda last month because it was claimed that it needed to be amended for state law, which subsequently was found not to be correct. And more importantly, it amended hundreds of change, it made hundreds of changes to things not related to state law changes. Thankfully, that was removed from the agenda. And the city attorney said, "We don't need to do anything." I ask for a public records request of all of the communication on this matter. Despite hundreds of pages, there's not a single document that explains the genesis of this project. Dozens of staff and hundreds of hours of time were spent on a matter, and we can't find what the genesis was. So there's two possible hypotheses. The first is that I was correct that our city manager lacks the experience to take the job that he had and wasted lots of time and made false statements. I actually don't think that's the reason. The second possibility is that the general manager, the city manager, was acting at the direction of one or more city council members. And for whatever reason, he is protecting them. So I don't understand why the city manager would choose to potentially look incompetent or protect somebody that was doing something incorrectly. Second topic. One council member sent an email blast claiming that she is the victim of lawfare. She also spoke at the LD3 GOP meeting, claiming that lawfare has come to the city of Scottsdale. Jan DeBaskis is claiming to be a victim when she herself started the lawfare by filing a false criminal complaint, joined by Barry and Adam, against our mayor. By the way, filing a false criminal complaint is against the law. More importantly, Jan, it is a violation of Section 8.4 of the Professional Conduct Code of the Arizona State Bar, which is why I referred your behavior to them. So it is audacious and hypocritical for Jan to play victim claiming lawfare when she was the one who started it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, that concludes public comment on non-agendized items. And I'll turn next to the meeting minutes approvals. And I will entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of July 1st, 2025, executive session meeting minutes of July 1st, 2025, regular meeting minutes of July 1, 2025.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor, please indicate your vote. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have consent agenda items one through thirteen. Does anyone on the council have any questions or wish to remove an item at this point? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items one through thirteen.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate your vote. All right. That concludes the consent agenda. And we have no regular agenda items this evening. So we will move on to citizens' petitions, which I see none. And moving right along, the next item on our, on our regular agenda is Boards and Commissions and Committees 2024 Annual Report Presentations, which we've done over the last several council meetings. And tonight, we have three, let's see, one, two, three, four presentations. And we have presentations in possible direction regarding key accomplishments, major actions taken, upcoming opportunities, challenges, and/or outcomes of the following public bodies. Starting with the Historic Preservation Commission, I would like to invite Jay Panzer, Chair, Adam Yaron, and Adam Yaron, Yaron, and am I saying that right? Who's our staff liaison for this group. Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor Borowski, Vice Mayor DeBaskis, and members of city council. My name is Adam Yaron, Commission Liaison of the Historic Preservation Commission. Joining me this evening is Jay Panzer, Chair of the Commission, who has served since May of 2023. Together, we're pleased to present highlights from the Commission, from the Commission's 2024 Annual Report, which was approved earlier this year. The Historic Preservation Commission consists of seven members appointed- The Historic Preservation Commission consists of seven members appointed by city council. The Commission's mission is to protect and preserve Scottsdale's historic and archaeological resources. Key responsibilities include maintaining the Scottsdale Historic Register, reviewing proposed changes to historic properties, recommending historic property district rezonings to the planning commission and then ultimately to city council, overseeing incentive programs such as the city's Historic Residential Exterior Rehabilitation, or H R E R, program funding, which supports the upkeep of historic properties. A recent example is the Titus House, Scottsdale's oldest single-family residence, which received funding to support the roof maintenance this last year. And finally, advising on broader preservation matters as well as other topics directed by city council.
Thank you. In 2024, the Commission advanced several initiatives to strengthen Scottsdale's preservation efforts. We reviewed and acted on multiple certificates of appropriateness applications, ensuring that alterations to historic preservation zone properties remain consistent with adopted preservation standards. The Commission developed and adopted a new historic plaque guideline to create a uniform and respectful approach for recognizing and promoting designated properties across the city. To expand community engagement, we created an Historic Preservation Outreach Plan that lays the groundwork for sustained awareness and participation in preservation initiatives. The Commission extended availability to participate in the city's annual gain-getting-Arizona-Involved-in-Neighborhoods event. Lastly, we facilitated a coordination meeting with the Arizona Historic Preservation Office, better known as SHIPO, to reinforce intra-agency collaboration and support for local preservation programs. The Commission remains committed to promoting public awareness of Scottsdale's heritage and identifying, recognizing, and protecting sites that reflect the city's past. Looking ahead, our focus will center on three key areas. Program administration. We will continue efforts to streamline and improve the Historic Residential Exterior Rehabilitation, these names are crazy, H R E R program, ensuring it remains accessible and impactful. Advocacy. The Commission will work closely with local and state partners to support preservation policies, tools, and incentives that reinforce Scottsdale's historic character. Outreach. Expanding communication and engagement with residents, community groups, and property owners remains a priority. We aim to foster a broader understanding of the value of historic preservation in shaping Scottsdale's unique identity. It would be, calm down, it would be remiss of me, this is something that was not in the early, in the printed remarks. It would be remiss of me to conclude without remarking on the support our Commission receives from Adam Yaron here to my left, Jesus Maria, and the entire planning and development staff. I've seen Commissions and sat on Commissions with support ranging from totally absent to excellent. And I'm happy to say the Scottsdale HBC falls squarely in the latter category. Our community is well-served by this dedicated team. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. We welcome your questions, comments, or feedback as we continue our work to protect and celebrate Scottsdale's heritage.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate that. And congratulations, Adam. Great accolades, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the report. Turning next to the, oh, sorry, pardon me, Councilwoman McAllen has something.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, well, thank you for your service, first of all, to the city. And thank you, Adam. Well-deserved accolades. Question, just for the general knowledge of our citizens watching from home and that are here. How many historic neighborhoods do we have in Scottsdale or approximately? And what is basically the definition year-wise for a historic neighborhood in Scottsdale?
Thank you, Councilwoman McAllen, Mayor Barowski, members of council. We have about six residential districts, give or take. And we have about another dozen or so commercial districts that are designated HP in our city's Old Town or Downtown area. And generally, the requirements are that they be fifty years and show some significance in terms of their architectural presence and history to Scottsdale's cultural past.
Excellent. Thank you. I know that there are homes in my neighborhood that have specific peaks on them. And when the storm and hail happened about ten years ago, roofers came through and wanted to take all these peaks off to expedite the roofing. And the neighbors pretty much all lost it and said, no, 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 those are the way they're supposed to look. That's, you know, historic preservation. So thank you for all you do to preserve the history and all that makes Scottsdale so special. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we turn to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And for this, I will invite, I'm gonna botch this one, Eric Mashapat? No, that's not right, I'm sure, but. Eric, how do you pronounce your last name? Say it again? Oh, that was easy. Who is the chair? Thank you for that. And Kevin McKee, Staff Representative. Welcome.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having us out this evening. As mentioned, I am Kevin McKee. I am a Deputy Director for Scottsdale's Parks and Recreation Division, and I'm joined by our Commission Chair, Eric, to my right. So we'll tell you a little bit more about our Commission and kind of what we've been up to lately. So the Commission historically has had two main functions. The first one is to advise the city council on the acquisition of lands and facilities for use as parks or recreation centers. The, the second purpose there is to advise the city council on the operation, use, care, and maintenance of these parks and recreation areas. As of July first, this Commission also has a new, a new purpose. So they are the Citizens Oversight Committee for our newly voter-enacted 2025 point one five Parks and Preserve Sales Tax. So they are providing us very valuable input on our capital planning and our master planning as it relates to those new tax funds. As for our makeup, we are made up of seven commissioners who are appointed by the city council at large. And side note, we did just celebrate sixty-five years. Yes, I said that right. Sixty-five years as a Commission, which is just so awesome. And I think it's really important for us, I know as, as staff members, as stewards of our public spaces, to really take a step back every now and then and appreciate our rich history here in Scottsdale and the innovators that came before us to give us the amazing public spaces that we have, like the beautiful Indian Bend Wash Park System and our McDowell Sonoran Preserve. So with that, I will pass things over to our Commission Chair, Eric, to talk a little bit more about some accomplishments from the calendar year 2024 and some things we're working on next.
Thanks, Kevin. So our 2024 accomplishments included the approval of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This is an important document. It's a system-wide guiding document for the next ten years. This was approved in late summer, and the council approved it in December as well. So we're looking forward to the next steps with that in 2025 and beyond. We've also approved the Indian School Park Site Master Plan. This is a forty-year-old park, and right now, we have this process running concurrently for our system-wide master plan. The final park concept is going to address our top community needs for play areas, sports fields, courts, and multi-generational center as well. In addition, in 2024, we have our approved pilot fees for Scottsdale Stadium's first base patio. This is an important patio in our ballpark that allows for rental of private parties and special events. And it's another unique item that we have on offer for both citizens and visitors. Upcoming opportunities, challenges, or outcomes, we will be looking, as you mentioned, for the Park and Preserve Sales Tax improvements, capital improvements. The Commission is the Citizens Oversight Committee. And of course, this is going to be a top priority for each of our next meetings. We'll also be, as part of that, recommending the annual tax budget for capital improvements. That'll be coming up in next year. And then, as part of that, we have already begun the improvements at Rotary Park as well as Pima Park. And those are going quite well and on schedule. The Bond 2019 projects, I would say, are coming towards the tail end of Bond 2019 and the activities there. For this year, they include the Cactus Aquatic Center and potential replacement. The Indian Bend Wash Lakes and Thompson Peak Dog Park will be completed as well. And then recently completed were Ashler Hills Park and the Riada Sports Complex. We'll be monitoring those throughout the year and helping advise on next steps. As part of that, finally, the master plan goals and visionary projects really incorporate the top two that I just mentioned. The feasibility study is taking place now for the Cactus Aquatic Center potential replacement, which is extremely important. And then we'll also include El Dorado and Vista del Camino improvements. And then finally, future Indian School Park improvements. We're also focusing on a little bit more prep and planning, a little bit more forward-looking for transparency purposes so the commissioners can be more prepared, as well as the citizenry, and of course, our Parks and Rec Division. And with that, thank you very much for allowing us to share.
Thank you, Eric, and thanks for your service. And thank you, Kevin. Excellent. We really appreciate your report. Any questions? Oh, yes, Councilman Graham.
Sixty-five years. Congratulations. You're eligible for Medicare.
Be applying soon.
Yeah, is the Commissioner applying?
We'll be visiting a senior center near us, that's for sure.
Does Parks and Rec, familiar with any senior centers they can talk to? Kevin, you become a little bit of a personality or a public figure. You're always in those videos the Parks and Rec are playing. Can you say a little more about those?
Yeah, Councilman Graham, Mayor Barowski. We really, over the last two and a half, three years, have focused more on getting our messaging out to the community. You know, one of the most, I think, frustrating things that, that I hear is, gosh, I didn't even know you guys were here. I didn't know you did this. I've lived in this neighborhood for fifty years. And we've really taken hands-on ownership of our communications. And I think people are taking note, really. And so, you know, we want people to know that we have amazing parks programs, people behind the scenes that are doing fantastic things. And I'm happy to hear that you're seeing some of the messaging that we're putting out.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're doing a good job, you know, being featured in those videos. And really, I think it's good for the city because it's, you know, I'm sure you're getting lots of views. And what it's doing is it's exposing the amenities that people can access. Like, we don't know everything that is, that we paid for and that is there for us to use. And so, I mean, it's like, I can't tell you, I mean, like, people don't know they can use Club Sar, you know? People don't know about, I mean, you just name it. It's like, oh, I didn't know that. Like you said, I didn't know that park was there. I was on the Transportation Commission for almost seven years. And it's like, that kind of interfaced a lot with, you know, paths and trails going through the Greenbelt and things like that. And it's just over and over, people didn't know. So I want to thank you for promoting, getting social media presence out there so people know the things they can do, places they can go, our amenities of the city. I'm really interested in the master plan for Parks and Rec two going forward. Voters gave us more money to spend on parks. And really, what that was, was that was voters telling us, you better spend this money on parks. And so, we need to respect that. And it's, the master plan is, that to me is, like I said, it's a big deal. Because we've got, I mean, we've all talked about it. I mean, we got these brand-new parks all across North Scottsdale. It's newer developments, newer area. And, you know, some of the parks in the southern section are, you know, a little dated. And so, it's, you know, these funds are going to be starting down in the south and moving northward. And that master plan is going to interface and integrate with those dollars. Would you agree with that?
Councilman Graham, absolutely. And I will note that that was, that master planning effort was an almost-two-year effort that we went through. And we saw unprecedented community engagement throughout that process. In fact, we were just recognized last week by the Arizona Planning Association for planning excellence for that plan. So we hit the ground running, and we're in a point now where with funding in place, we know what the community's priorities are. And exactly like you said, we're starting down south and reinvesting in some of our most aged parks and breathing some new life into those.
You guys plan excellence, don't you? And award-winning too. Our parks are award-winning, nationally-recognized parks. So that's something to be proud of. So thank you for talking with us. I know my colleagues have more questions, but Mr. Chair, Mr. McKee, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman McAllen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your service, Eric. Thank you, Kevin. When you were saying how long the parks were and you're saying old sixty-five, I saw you gaze right up at me. Just saying. I did grow up in the parks. I love the parks. Everyone knows I'm a huge proponent of the parks. I worked for Parks and Rec in Human Services for over a decade and a half. I'm very proud. But what I wanted to say is that you guys won awards this year through planning, through APRA. You guys are very modest with all that you've accomplished. The master plan, I know how much work that was. But you didn't talk about what's happening this Saturday.
Okay, Councilwoman McAllen, shameless plug here. We are having our Parks and Rec Rewind Nineties Night, okay? It's gonna be an incredible event from six to nine PM. We'll be playing all the oldies. I guess we're calling them oldies now, yeah? So we'll have live music, nostalgia. We'll have some really awesome kind of old movie displays and so much fun, Fun for All Ages and arcade. This will be our third year running this event, and we are so excited. So it's a free community event. Part of our focus, we talk about our master plan, is activating this awesome new, newly renovated civic center here. And I think it's gonna be a really special night.
I'm gonna be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we are, thank you for being here, and thank you again for your service. We're moving on to the Scottsdale Environmental Advisory Commission. And Chair Andrew Scheck will address us, along with Staff Representative Tim Connor. Welcome, gentlemen. I, I think your microphone is, remains off, so.
Okay, there we go. I'll start over. Good evening, Madam Mayor. And Vice Mayor DeBaskis has left the scene, but at the same time, I would say thank you to all of the members of the city council that are here tonight. My name is Tim Connor, and I'm the Commission Liaison for the Scottsdale Environmental Advisory Commission. Joining me this evening is Andrew Scheck. He is our current Chair of the Commission, and he has been on the Commission for, since 2021. Together, we're pleased to present highlights of the Commission's 2024 annual report, which was approved later, or excuse me, earlier this year. Next slide, please.
Okay, the Commission is charged with advising the city council on matters related to the preservation and enhancement of Scottsdale's environment and supporting the city's broader commitment to the environment, economic, and social sustainability. The Commission's core responsibilities include recommending policies and programs and ordinances that promote environmental quality, supporting education and outreach on key environmental issues, identifying opportunities for innovation and collaboration, selecting recipients for the city's sustainability, or excuse me, the Sustainable Scottsdale Award, and finally, receiving public comments on topics with the Commission's responsibilities and use that input for the information to provide input to the city council. Next slide, please. SEEK has seven members, all appointed by the council. The membership is designed to reflect both scientific and non-scientific perspectives. This includes professionals with backgrounds of environmental fields as well as representatives from the businesses and the community at large. It's important to note that there is no requirement for a specific number of members to be, have environmental expertise. This ensures the board's, the broad range of perspective coming into the Commission as they work together. Next slide, please. And I'm gonna turn this over to Chair Scheck. And I'm going to turn this over to Chair Scheck. You go. Have this on. Okay, thanks. In 2024, the Commission carried out responsibilities by offering input and recommendations to City Council as part of the Community Sustainability Plan Development. We also redesigned the Sustainable Scottsdale Awards Program and selected our city as the 2024 honoree, recognizing their leadership in advancing environmental initiatives in the community. Through these efforts, the Commission continued to build awareness, deepen our understanding of complex issues, and establish a foundation for future recommendations for City Council to consider. Next slide, please. Upcoming challenges, great. Looking ahead, while the 2024 SEEK Annual Report reflected priorities based on the Sustainability Plan in effect at the time, some of those items are no longer part of the Commission's active work plan due to changes in city priorities. With the repeal of that plan, SEEK has adjusted its focus and is now concentrating on current initiatives that best serve Scottsdale's environmental goals. Looking ahead, the Commission will focus on community engagement, education, and environmental leadership. Key priorities include providing recommendations on water conservation, supporting reuse and recycling initiatives like Goodwill's Donation Pilot Program, and identifying funding opportunities for conservation, heat mitigation, and energy efficiency projects. We'll also support the Shade and Tree Plan and work to expand solar and alternative energy used in civic facilities. Through these efforts, we will continue advocating for renewable energy, improved air quality, waste reduction, and overall climate resilience in Scottsdale. Next, please. Closing, so basically, I appreciate the time and presentation. And any questions you have? I'm all good?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure my mic's on. Have you received the Treat and Shea Plan? I wonder if that's been, being reviewed at this present time?
I'll answer, I'll take that question. Essentially, we have not brought that forward, other than just an early concept with the Commission. We are currently steam, streamlining, excuse me, the plan so that we can bring it back to them for additional adjustments in the future.
When do you expect to have the plan?
We expect the plan to be completed by the end of this year, calendar year.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, we're still on schedule for that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and when is the, so you're doing these environmental awards every year? I think that's pretty cool. When is the next? I somehow missed the last one. When is the next one?
I'm sorry, I missed.
The environmental award, our city received the environmental award?
Oh, the awards, coming up in, we're going to start it actually now to do the awards again for, prepare for it for next year, yes.
Do people, residents submit?
Residents submit companies, sometimes themselves. They can submit businesses or organizations in Scottsdale that makes a difference.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your service, Andrew.
Thanks.
And of course, your hard work. Thank you very much. Next and last, we have the Tourism Development Commission. And for that, we have Chair Anna Manier, Manier, I should know that. And Staff Representatives, Rachel Smantana and Steve Giggema. Welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council. Thank you for having us. We are happy to be here to present our annual report and also delighted to tell you that we'll be coming back before you on October seventh to speak longer and more in-depth during a work study about events and events funding. But tonight, please let me just introduce our Commission. The purpose of the Tourism Development Commission probably needs no introduction. They oversee recommendations or decline requests for tourism development funding to the City Council. They also oversee any application or funding program or process and our five-year strategic plan. So, our Commission is also made up of seven citizens of Scottsdale, residents of Scottsdale. Four of them must be hoteliers. And it is getting increasingly difficult to find a hotelier that hasn't already served that also lives in Scottsdale. But tonight, you found two more. Thank you very much, and thank you to Experian Scottsdale, who also helps us fill those vacancies. The other three members of the Commission must also have some sort of tie to the tourism industry. And with that, I will turn it over to Chair Anna Manier.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I am honored to be the Chair of this Commission. It is such a great Commission to be a part of. It's always exciting to see what's coming into Scottsdale. I want to thank our Vice Chair, who's here in the audience, Chris Montgomery, is here with Fiesta Sports, formerly Fiesta Bowl. So, I want to thank him for joining us. And welcome to the new Commission members. I didn't get a chance to say hello yet, but we're very excited to be complete. We've been missing those empty seats for a little while. Our first bullet point here is the Tourism Development Fund Budget Review. I wanted to bring to the attention of the Council that we did recommend $600,000 less than the initial proposed budget. What this shows is we really took the time to go through and look at these numbers. There were some items in there that we didn't find to be necessarily tourism-related. We then sent those back to the general fund, where we thought those funds should be coming from. We also have a strategic business plan with Experian Scottsdale. They come to us and they do a wonderful job. They report to us at least every quarter. More often than that, we see them, they're at every meeting. So, they're very involved with the Commission. And we're all making sure we're staying on the right page with our goals. One of the things we started this year, and it kind of started with Jeanne Elspah, who was the Chair prior, we have added a section, I guess, to our applications, asking if a nonprofit is benefiting from your event. This is something we thought is important. It is not required. But we wanted it to be top of mind for people to maybe give back to the Scottsdale community if they are receiving Scottsdale funds. Another thing we've really taken, you know, into consideration with a lot of our presentations is how are these events going to be sustained for the long term without city funding? So, I personally have a big background in sponsorship dollars. I do encourage these producers to find them. Once they're ready, once the development fund has been used with the city to mill them up, please, you know, look outside the city for maybe some sponsorships that are, you know, on the private sector. So, I'm really proud of those last two things that we've really kind of changed and brought to the forefront of our applications. Oh, sorry. I saw you mentioned something. Opportunities. So, we're super excited to start getting Council feedback. As Rachel mentioned, we are going to be having the work study, and I'm really looking forward to that. I hope to be there as well. So, we can all work together and see exactly, you know, what is everyone's goal. We haven't had the opportunity to do that so far. Looking forward to that very much. And considering, you know, the Budget Review Commission to be, to give their input on our budget review process, the more ideas, the more voices, the better, right? Some challenges we have, requests are on the rise. We have a lot of people coming, wanting to do events in Scottsdale. We have a great program. They see, you know, some of the amazing events we are funding. So, with that, I give all the credit to city staff for initially going through those requests, making sure they meet those goals, the restrictions, all of those things. They work very, very hard. And I want people to understand that by the time it comes to the Commission, they've done so much work already. And it does not go unnoticed by us, but I hope other people acknowledge that as well. Rachel mentioned our Commission membership. It has been difficult. We sat for a few months with two seats open. With it being required for hoteliers to be four of those seats, it's difficult to find ones that live in Scottsdale and have the time. Unfortunately, that does not allow for someone who's retired to sit with us because they have to have that current position. So, it's been a challenge, but we're up for it. And now, we are full and hope to stay there for a while. Commissioners are also encouraged to attend events. And I want you guys to understand and for the public to understand that we do follow-up and go to as many as we can. Obviously, we can't go to all of them. And we do get post-event reports. Also, something I don't think everyone may understand, that we, the staff, don't say we, but the staff does take a lot of time in reviewing the deliverables and making sure they're there. If they're not, those funds can be adjusted. So, I want that to be known to everyone that knows we are using their tax dollars wisely. So, with that, I think I am finished. If there's any questions, please let us know.
Madam Mayor, may I? I was remiss to not introduce my colleague, Steve Giggema, eighteen-year employee of the City of Scottsdale in tourism. And I brought him in case you have any really hard questions.
Excellent. I want to start by saying thank you. That's an excellent review of what you're working on and great job as the Chair bringing those items forward. Question, or at least a suggestion for the box. Should we open, I know it's Scottsdale residents are typically reserved, or they must be Scottsdale residents to be on the boards and commissions, but there are a few, I'll have to fact-check this, but that don't require that, I believe. And should we be opening the, this particular Commission up to people that don't live in Scottsdale but work in Scottsdale in tourism? That's just a question. I don't have an answer for that. But I think there's a, there's room for discussion because if we candidly are running out of people, that would not be a good thing. So, maybe there's a reorg on that. We're blessed to have hoteliers that stay in Scottsdale for a really long time, so there's probably not a lot of turnover and a new pool of eligibles. I know the O'Daro gentleman said that he was relatively new, so that's a tough challenge. And then I really like the rules change, or no, no, second point I want to make before I move on to a couple of things you said. I've heard from some people that are involved in event planning that the rules that apply to funding these events are somewhat fluid or have been somewhat fluid in the last few years. And I would love to, when we do our work study, kind of do a deep dive into, you know, making sure the rules are applicable and really don't change from over time or depending on what the event is. So, that's, I think that's a really big priority for me. I love what you're doing with encouraging nonprofit participation, and I think that's a great idea. And I would love to see a consideration for a higher priority on those events that are doing that, maybe a bump up, you know, in the, in the process of getting approved. And also, of course, private sector dollars is wonderful. So, thanks for all that. Councilwoman McAllen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your service, Ms. Manier, and Steve, and Rachel. I love the update that you guys do, the Old Town Update. Also, I know that's part of Rachel's position and Steve's position that they do the Old Town Quarterly Update. But I noticed that you had commissioners there. And I tend to go to everything. Like, I was just at the rodeo, and I was saying how great it was. And then I get a text the next morning from Anna saying, how was the rodeo? I'm going today. They really put the time and effort into it, and it's, they're walking the walk, you know, and I love that. It's great to go to city events that city funds and invests in and see city staff and see city volunteers there, so people can recognize that. It just, you're really living what you say and doing it. So, I appreciate that. That's my comment.
Thank you. And I see there's no other questions or comments. So, with that, thank you very much. I appreciate your service and your hard work. That concludes the Boards and Commissions' update. So, we will move on to our work study session. And this work study session, work study sessions generally provide a less formal setting for the Mayor and Council to discuss specific topics with each other and city staff and provide staff an opportunity to receive direction from Council in order to provide an opportunity, oh, there is no, let's see. There is public comment, yes, we have public comments. And in order to maximize the amount of time the Council has available to focus on these discussions, spoken comments will be limited to five speakers at three minutes apiece. So, I'd like to start with the public comment with, I'm going to read a list of names. There are five people tonight. Carlos Artega, French Thompson, Jane Brenna, John Truitt, and Sasha Weller of the Firefighters Association. So, starting with Carlos Artega, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Is Carlos here? All right, if he comes, we can let him speak later. French Thompson. You're, you're gonna, okay, withdraw that. Jane Brenna. Okay, not here? All right, John Truitt.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is John Truitt. I'm the State Fire Management Officer for the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. And I'm here to show support and recognize Scottsdale Fire Department. I'll share a little bit of my background with you. I've been a wildland firefighter for forty-six years now. I did thirty-six years with the Forest Service over in California. I've been here in Arizona for the last ten years. Currently, a Type One Incident Commander, I'm one of the national incident management teams. So, why I share that with you is it kind of gives you the background of how I can recognize a very professional and very aggressive fire department, and that's what Scottsdale Fire Department is. They're one of the most reliable departments in the valley when it comes to response and mitigation. We work very closely with them, partner with them, as far as our fuels mitigation, prevention programs, fire-wise, and all other, you know, cooperations that we have. Chief Shannon has really brought this, the wildfire mitigation to the pinnacle of what a good department does, a good aggressive department does. You all know that you live in a high-fire environment area, and catastrophic fire can happen here any day. You get a little bit of wind behind it, and it's a, it's a challenge. It's going to be chaos. But what the leadership of Chief Shannon has provided with hiring a wildland coordinator, what that has done is it's brought all the other city departments together, stakeholders together, and they do tabletop exercises. So, the importance of that is that we can, we can basically exercise that fire on a, on a controlled area, go over the values at risk that everybody has. That's the last thing you want to do is be at the head of a truck with a big column coming up and trying to figure all this stuff out. So, they're very proactive in that, in that arena of doing what we call the preseason. The other thing is the fire mitigation. Just working with all the other partners, they've come up with a very strategic plan out there, very strategic ground that they're grabbing for right now. And that'll, that'll go a long way when it comes to that response that we have, that we have some defensible space, we have some area to go to, to be able to help the residents and the citizens and provide that public safety. So, again, just to recognize that the quality that the Scottsdale Fire Department brings, we also send the Scottsdale Fire Department out through the West, and I have nothing but compliments from all the other folks that I've worked with out there. I have been around a long time, I have a lot of connections, and I do get positive feedback anytime Scottsdale's out there and how professional and, and how much of a difference they make when they're out on the, on the fire line. So, again, just wanted to show my support and recognize the department and Chief Shannon and just an outstanding job that they've been doing.
Thank you, John. I couldn't agree with you more, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of everyone sitting up here. So, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Sasha Weller.
Good evening, Mayor Borowski, Vice Mayor Dubas, members of Council, Sasha Weller, Scottsdale Firefighters Association. Just wanted to share with you how fortunate we are. Scottsdale's the very best protected city in this valley when it comes to our wildland prevention, suppression, urban interface, training. Our members are the most dedicated firefighters you're going to find. As an example of some of the things that we take advantage of is, yesterday, Texas Governor Greg Abbott took a real step forward in wildland fire prevention by adopting the International Association of Firefighters Wildland Urban Interface, Responding to Interface Curriculum for the state of Arizona. And that sounds really, really impressive that he did that yesterday, and it's a big, huge thing. What I want to share with you is that we did that six years ago. We're the very first department in the country to do it. That program was beta-tested in Bozeman, Montana. We adopted it. We tried to be the beta-test city, but because we weren't a mountain town, we didn't have that ability to. So, when you hear the programs that were involved in, we are always on the front of those. We're on a cutting-edge fire department. Recently, in the newspaper and many different publications, I've heard us referred to or compared to Los Angeles and the fires that were happening in Los Angeles. I'm a Scottsdalian. I don't want to be compared to Los Angeles. The last place we should be compared to is Scottsdale or is, is Los Angeles. We're better than that. We do a better job, we're better prepared, we're far more aggressive in our, in our proactive approach. We are out there every single day doing a far better job. To compare us to Los Angeles, really an apples-to-oranges comparison. There are different fuel models, there are prevention methods are, are not- comparison. Their different fuel models, their prevention methods are, are, are not as advanced as ours and far less aggressive. The presenter that talked about the preserve touched a little bit about it, presented three fires, and I think the term that he used was fires that encroached upon the preserve. Encroach is an important word. The encroachment upon the preserve is not by accident. They encroached upon the preserve and didn't get into the preserve, not by accident. There's no such thing as, as a coincidence in our world. You ask any of these gentlemen standing here behind you, they've heard of coincidence, they've just never seen one. The reason why they encroach upon the preserve and well those fires don't get in to the preserve is because of the hard work of these people and the gritty, rugged, aggressive fire attack, the leadership that we have in the fire service, the aggressive nature of our prevention methods. So none of that comes by mistake. We've got an excellent, excellent leadership team at Scottsdale Fire Department. Chief Shannon and his executive staff are just phenomenal. They give us the tools that we need to get our job done. And we, we couldn't be blessed with a better chief. There is lots of talk about volunteerism, volunteer firefighters, et cetera. So I just want to set the record straight where we stand on it. There's a place for volunteerism in the Scottsdale Fire Department. We have several. I think we have well over 100 volunteers. There's just not really a place for us, if you'll allow me just 30 seconds, Mayor. There's just not really a place for us to support volunteerism and putting those people in a hazard, in a hazard zone. It makes our life much more complicated, and it detracts from our ability to actually go do the work that we need to do. I'll just leave it with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sasha. Appreciate your input. And congratulations on getting ahead of the program that Governor Abbott just announced. That's wonderful. And you are fire, our fire department head and shoulders above the rest, in my opinion. So thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. I'm going to start by, before Tom Shannon, Chief Shannon will be speaking on behalf of Scottsdale Fire Department and as the chief, I should say, and presenting tonight on fire mitigation prevention efforts utilizing fire retardant products approved and in use by the U.S. Forest Service and expansion or status and input on volunteer efforts at the Scottsdale Fire Department. And Chief Shannon, if I may, before I turn this over to you, I want to start by saying this was my request to put this on the agenda. I appreciate all the firefighters that you brought. That's a great crowd. Really, really appreciate it. And it's great to see you all here. Thank you for spending your Tuesday night with us. And before we get started, I just want to say I met with Chief Shannon and City Manager Greg Caton, must be four months ago now. And it was based on a resident input on how we can potentially mitigate in a stronger fashion, not to say that we weren't already doing everything possible to do that, but how could we think outside the box and enlist volunteers in our community, residents, to participate in mitigating wildfires in North Scottsdale, in and around the preserve and throughout those communities. And I, the words didn't even get out of my mouth before the narrative was taken over about the fact that I wanted to supplement or my idea was to replace or add volunteers to the firefighting division of your department. And I want to go on record and say that's absolutely false. And my idea and my was and still is to, to really give Scottsdale Fire the support and the, the room to see how, if, you know, if there's a way to use our residents that are so involved in Scottsdale to enhance our ability to protect ourselves and our community from wildfires. And it's easy to say, Sasha, you raised a good point. No one would ever dare compare us to LA. However, what we saw in devastation in the Pacific Palisades certainly seems like a very big risk to me in North Scottsdale. So while there's no comparison in most cases, I do think that we have a lot of wildfire risk out there. And I don't think anyone, including, you know, you can disagree with me, but that seems like to me, as, as a layperson that doesn't know your job, as a big, huge risk. So the narrative that took, spread like wildfire, pardon the pun, was not mine. It was that of people trying to say no and just say no, and let's just keep saying no. So big ideas are what Scottsdale was made of. And I, if anyone is going to tell me that we don't have room to add a strong resident group to help with things that firefighters don't do and will not be doing to enhance our protection, I am ready to hear it. But I know this is your presentation, and we'll open it for questions after you, you do that. Thank you very much. Oh, I do want to show a little video. I'm sorry, Tom. I know that's keyed up and ready to go. I was into my comments and forgot about that. And do you have that by chance? And again, not to compare us to LA. I think Sasha took a preview of the video.
Firefighters battling this blaze from the air and from the ground. And among all of those wonderful firefighters doing what they can, there are volunteers on the front lines of this battle as well.
I live in the Pacific Palisades. I'm a mechanical engineer.
I live in Topanga Canyon, and I'm an artist agent.
Photo shoots and commercials.
A landscape contractor.
And I'm an actor.
The director of retail.
I'm a naval scientist.
Private equity, then in venture capital.
A marketer.
I'm an electrical and low voltage contractor.
What you're seeing here is something that's not anywhere else in the country. It's a collaborative partnership between dedicated community members.
I had lost my family home in 1993, but when I had heard about an opportunity to join the brigade, I was all in 100%.
Over the last two months, we've seen their mission in action.
Those guys saved our community.
To be able to get trained as a firefighter to get my hands dirty and help people evacuate has just been, like, so fulfilling.
A sense of fellowship in service that I think is really powerful. Do something to help in the community I live in with this amazing group of people.
It's the connection between people. As they're working in the healing in their community, they're finding a lot of healing in themselves.
It's really showing and caring for your community and giving back to your community.
And when we came around the corner and walked under a property, she saw us and she just broke down and was crying. It just like fell into my arms. It was like hugging me. And just being able to reassure her like that, it like felt really good. And that's something that will definitely stick with me.
So who best, who really create a resilient community than the community members themselves?
Wildfires are inevitable. Community destruction doesn't have to be.
It is so much stronger when we work together for this, this end result. The bottom line is it will minimize loss, it will accelerate recovery, and it will strengthen the community.
The women and the men standing behind me of the community brigade represent the best of LA County, coming together in times of need to protect other residents and the communities that they live in.
I guess it's kind of obvious, but to see it in practice, and we're hearing that reflected from a lot of people, that this was, was really an important thing for them. And there's a lot of connection that's very strong, that's developing. Yeah, it's, it's a lot more than just putting out fire.
Protecting your loved ones, protecting your schools and your homes and so forth is a noble thing to do. There's, there's nothing wrong with it. And this program is designed for us to do it together, for us to bring together government and community. You will never regret doing this. There, there is no negative about doing this.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging that video. And with that, Chief Tom Shannon.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My staff member's going to pass out something that we may or may not get to. It, it isn't relevant to my presentation, but if we, if we go down a rabbit hole in terms of some of the programming that we do provide, we may find ourselves in that world. So thank you for inviting me to speak to the fire mitigation prevention efforts utilizing fire retardant products approved and in use by the United States Forest Service, and then the expansion or status of volunteer efforts specific to proactive wildfire fuel mitigation. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the use of ground-applied retardants is a, a new innovation and, and quite honestly has a lot of promise. Most of us are familiar with aerial applications. It is exactly what we've seen in Scottsdale over the last several years, where thanks to the relationship with the Department of Fire and Forestry Management, our, our state agencies and our federal partners, we have seen the availability of air resources to create good, strong borders between our houses and the areas of our open spaces that have been burning. And so that is what is in our, all of our minds right now as we think of what's been happening, happening in Scottsdale. Let me just tell you a little bit about the uses of that product so you can have some context. They certainly are applied to vegetation in advance of spreading or fires that are, are anticipated. They can be used across control lines, roads, or natural barriers to strengthen them. They're applied to vegetation or flammable materials near structures within the wooi. So wooi refers to the Wildland Urban Interface, and I'll, I'll say that term a lot tonight. And it helps reduce reignition by coating the vegetation with not combustible material. The benefits of it are obvious. It reduces the flammability of the fuel. It creates wider windows for control and escape, which were huge and critical issues in the California fires, and certainly requires less water in the application of the firefight. Some of the nice features of the product can be it has some stick-to-it-ness. It has a gel feature that can provide for some days and even months of application, even in the, in the face of rain. And so that's an interesting feature. Some of the cautions include some environmental sensitivity where these retardants can be harmful to aquatic species or water areas of, of a community. The application method has to be reliable and applied in a way that requires technical expertise to get that done. It's camp, it isn't necessarily something we can go down to a, a local market and apply with any real reliability. It needs to be done in a way that has, has some science behind it. It can leave some exposure to human and animal species with inhalation and those sorts of things being a concern. And then there are certainly the considerations of the fact that they include elements that in, in fact will fertilize and perhaps germinate the vegetation even further. In the absence of fire, you could actually see increased growth in the area of application over time. And so it's something to consider as you consider this product. And so the, the, the efforts being undertaken in the use of ground-applied fire retardants include private property owners who seek to increase their protections even after doing and making great defendable space efforts. Certainly, the protection of public infrastructure and important technology. APS is probably the best example of what's happening in the preserve. They are very, very good at wildland fuel mitigation because obviously they've got enormous infrastructure to protect. Another example might be our radio systems up on the towers inside the preserve would be another great application for that. And so there is a place for fire retardant in, in our community, and it certainly should be a tool and a tactic in our toolbox. And so we would, we would entertain any opportunity to, to engage in that area over time. It just has to be in the formula that we're going to use for overall fire prevention and fuel mitigation. So that include, that, that, that concludes my discussion of fire retardant. If you want me, I can continue on with the volunteerism, and we can get to questions afterwards, or I can stop here. We can talk about retardant.
Completely up to you. This is your presentation.
Okay. Well, then why don't I continue, and then we'll just get to it.
Okay.
Next slide. Thank you. So great news in the volunteer corps. As Captain Weller indicated, we have a robust volunteer corps. We have over 90 volunteers that are rostered in our organization. COVID kind of hurt us a little bit. We lost, we had well over 100 before, but COVID has reduced that amount. About 30% of those include our cadets. Many of the blue shirt firefighters that are here in support of this conversation probably were cadets at one time. And so they came into the organization in a way that was an introductory way to the fire service. Most of our volunteers are in our prevention or community risk reduction efforts. So our, it wouldn't surprise you to know that our most common call are falls. And so we do a lot to reduce falls in the community. We, we engage with our senior community and, and encounter them in their homes or in their congregate carriers, congregant care areas. And we literally do home assessments to make sure that their spaces are safe for them to operate in. And so those two fit-to-fall programs are critical to that. We're, we're involved in daily activity. We partner with our Parks and Rec collaborators in trail engagement and safety in the trails. We apply smoke alarms and lock boxes and, and do hazardous vegetation assessments. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This is an example of some of our hazardous vegetation assessments that we use, not only our frontline members. And what this slide is showing you is the area in the, in the NAOs where some of those vegetation assessments have occurred. And those are done by windshield surveys by the firefighters. And they go out, and they're out in what we call our first due area, and they provide the eyes-on observation of what's really out there in terms of fuels. And then they report that back through a very tech-savvy IT group in an iPad form to either follow up or check off that the defendable space that's in the NAOs or in the adjacent preserve areas or in the roadways either meets or does not meet the standard for defendable space. And so if you'll go to the next slide, thank you. This is an example. Over 34,000 residents were, were assessed, and I think this was probably an old slide. I think, Carrie, we're probably north of 40,000 or 44,000. So 44,000 residents this last season. So that's not, that's not in total. That's each season. And so that gives you a sense of the activity. We, we upstaff brush trucks usually in the March-April timeline because of the, the likelihood that temperatures and humidity and heat index are going to provide for fire conditions that are, you know, afford opportunity for things to happen. And we get them out there doing these assessments. And they, they don't wait for fires to break out. They're out there making sure that they don't. They do construction site surveys and all of that. One of the, one of the greatest things about our volunteerism in this area is that the gentleman that does the follow-up and helps us identify this through our, our GIS stuff is a volunteer. It's not one of our paid members. And, but yet, we collaborate with our IT and GIS partners, and particularly Mel Kanoia, who, if you haven't met him, you need to. He's brilliant. And he does all of our mapping. And so this is a, this is a village kind of mentality between our volunteers, our, our very skilled firefighters, and our current city staff in order to make sure that what we are seeing out there in terms of potentiality is really, is really being addressed. And we don't do that necessarily in, in a reactive way. We try to be very, very, very proactive. As Chief Truitt identified, we try to get the region together early in the season to talk about what's going to happen to us. And we know that it's not just that Scottsdale has the single largest municipal preserve in the country, but we are the crown jewel of the valley, and we need to be super aggressive about what our wooi looks like. And so our, I would say almost a little bit arrogantly here that our, that our partners around the valley are happy to participate in the conversation as it applies to Scottsdale because we know it, it affects Buckeye, it affects, affects North Phoenix, it affects South Phoenix. And so anywhere where there's fuel that can burn up against residential communities or commercial properties, this is where we, where we will find ourselves. And so volunteerism is alive and well in Scottsdale. And I, it, the use of volunteers is, is not a, is, is not something that is an easy endeavor. And so before I take comments, I, I just want to kind of discuss that a little bit. And so it's a bit of an awkward conversation for me because I, I, I'm uncomfortable in having to appear to be diminishing the value of volunteerism in our city in order to contrast the prominent space and place that the Scottsdale Fire Department now holds in the public safety region and our national standard, standing. So innovation is not foreign to Scottsdale. We have been known for innovation for decades, quite literally. From its earliest roots, the department has focused its energy and resources towards stopping bad things from happening to our residents, neighbors, and visitors. But risk deference, profit, and special interests can kill innovation. And I want to talk to us a little bit about that. In 2004, a company that was started on the premise-- In 2004, a company that was started on the premise of helping one's neighbors had become a profit-driven-over-public-safety entity. They informed the city that there wasn't enough money in Scottsdale to continue to perform. And so they left. And that is, it's not necessarily meant to be a criticism of the company. It's just that it was their business model, and it just didn't work for them in Scottsdale. What had included innovative approaches to EMS services, special event management, and fire prevention systems like our residential sprinkler requirement no longer served corporate interest of improving the bottom line, so they were abandoned. Those services were delivered with firefighters and EMS providers and the public bearing the risk entirely of those bad things happening by minimizing the emergency resources available to respond while all around Scottsdale, and at that time I was in Glendale, the Phoenix metropolitan area had become the largest single all-hazard fire response system in the world. And I mean, in the world. Second only to FDNY in terms of resources. If this building started burning today, right now, over 600 pieces of equipment would keep coming until we told them to stop. And that is a significant thought. And prior to 2005, that didn't exist. Scottsdale was literally on their own. It created an environment where these firefighters were ferocious, and I mean ferocious, in the ability to manage more with less. And it created innovation like sprinkler ordinances that essentially added stops in northern Scottsdale and anywhere frankly north of probably Goshay, huh? At that time, all new builds included that. And so that is true innovation. We are now categorized as a metro-sized department that offers comprehensive, highly technical services to our citizens and visitors. Most notably, we are a metro-sized department where the expansive WUWE or Wildland Urban Interface, where residency and recreation coexist with the largest municipal preserve in the nation. That innovation in the preserve and the surrounding natural area open spaces has been pioneered for decades by many people in this room and is now the crown jewel of Scottsdale and the valley. Citizen volunteers created that western flair through strict vision of quality and standards for wildland urban living. Professional municipal developers and planners and activists and public safety service providers have ensured that our citizens and visitors are safe as they enjoy that experience. Collaboration with state agencies, conservancies, park systems, and citizen commissions have been the cornerstone of this success. So my obligation as your fire chief is to ensure that the services provided by the city are the safest and most resilient possible. There is a continuing role for the community, the businesses, and other governmental agencies in that process. Volunteers will continue to be a key player in the role and support of those positions in our mission. We honor them always today, and they help us connect to those services who benefit from them. There's some important distinctions about our volunteers that need to be probably contrasted with the video that we saw. I know Chief Maroni, he is a true hero of mine. What he faced in Los Angeles was almost unimaginable. But it's different. We don't face the winds that they face as frequently as they face them. We certainly are subject to western outflows during the monsoon seasons. And if we're not good at fuel management, as Chief Truitt has indicated, we are. We are vulnerable, and we could be at risk. And so I don't want to minimize the importance of staying the course of what we're doing. But the reality is that our volunteer demographic is my age and older, and it is a dangerous proposition to use them in anything other than the areas of expertise that they bring from their private lives and in areas of support that can help us move the ball forward. And I'm telling you, there is a place for them. Right now, we have an abundance of volunteers, and I'm quite sure that as I work with the city manager to provide additional programming and with the resolution of Proposition 490, we're going to find some new opportunities in that space that we're going to see a robust re-engagement of some of the sleepy 90 folks that are out there who want to come out and really engage the community. And so that's, I know it's a brief presentation on what is really an expansive topic. I'll finish with this. We have burned less than 24 acres this year. That's extraordinary. And I want to say it's, you know, God has helped us, for sure. But the reality is that all the things that we have focused on with fuel mitigation, with site inspections, with windshield surveys, with professional firefighters being on the job have helped us reduce the amount of vulnerability that we've had this year. And I'm not going to rest on those laurels because I know dry spells can come and we could be in a different place next week. But the reality is that hard work has paid off this year. When we last spoke early in the spring, we talked about the things we intended to do, and we did them. And so I'm hoping that you'll support us in the future. And my promise to you mayors that we're going to continue to look at ways to engage our community in this effort because every one of us uniformly agrees that our wildland and open spaces are something we need to protect. I know you do, and I appreciate that support. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. I just want to touch on a couple of things. You didn't talk about the NAOs updated ordinance that amended. I think that's important. I don't want to catch you off guard, but I know you know a lot about it.
I have an update.
If you wouldn't mind and let us know how that's coming into practice.
Yes, Mayor Borowski, members of the council. So, great news, great planning folks in our city, great work on de-conflicting the narrative between existing NAOs and ESL language has been done. We believe we're almost ready to bring something to the city manager for his review. I have met with the significant voices in the community to assure them that what my interest is, is to either offer and provide our citizens with the ability to do more when necessary in their NAOs, private property obligated areas, or perhaps compel them to do so when perhaps they're impacting their neighbors. And so that's the part I understand quite honestly. It's got everybody nervous, is what is the fire chief likely to ask us to do? But we're being very thoughtful. We're working with our significant voices in the community. We will meet with them again here shortly. I'm working with the city manager to come up with some language for you to see, hopefully by mid-fall. And then we will have a solution that can be coupled with technology so we can make sure that where slope, fuel type, and load change inside the NAOs, we can ask folks to do a little bit more, and when it's not required, we can minimize that. So that's the update on NAOs.
Thank you. And on that note, you're definitely the expert on all of that. And, you know, for me, I would support you being the boss of that, right? Really. I mean, it may be one thing not to want to clear your property, but it's a whole other, you know, position to take when it's presenting a danger, right, to everybody around you. So there was two other questions I have before I move on to the council questions. How, I do have a question because an alarm went off outside of my house, and I didn't want to call the fire department and have a truck show up, but the things you listed that the volunteers and the cadets do, I think that's highly valuable. How does one, a homeowner, get in touch with them? Call 911 and just take your chances and the fire truck shows up?
Well, when in doubt, call 911. We don't want any guesswork. We have our great partner in the PD that helps us kind of route calls appropriately. But when in doubt, certainly call 911. But we do have planned assessments in homes of not only your fire protection systems, but if you have residential sprinklers, we'll come out and take a look at those. So we have a lot of community services we can offer. And that, when technical expertise is required, we have staff who will do that. But when it's not, we can have volunteers go out there and help there. And that's an opportunity for volunteerism in the fire department.
By the way, great work. My neighbor was trying to convince me to call 911, get the fire department out there because she said you came out and changed all the batteries in her fire sprinklers. So excellent work, but I, and I think that's great, you know? And hopefully you can use cadets and the others that you list. Okay, perfect. And lastly, I asked the interim chair of the conservancy to stay because I know we've had conversations about kind of the, you know, push-pull, about the NAOs or the, you know, protecting and preserving what's natural out there. And I, for one, would love to see you, Mike, and Chief Shannon pow-wow and come up with, you know, strategy as to how to best do that moving forward. And so thank you for sticking around to hear this today. And that's all I have. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
And moving on to Councilwoman McCallen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Chief. My question is a little off-topic, but what is the most pressing issue or need that the Scottsdale Fire Department has currently that we can assist you with?
Well, not to steal my brother in the room who just turned 20 in the city, but we have over 200 firefighters that turned 20 as well just this last month. And so the attrition of our senior members, those who have aged into the pension system and are now eligible to retire, provides for an opportunity for us to reboot that generation and invest in the next generation who is going to lead us into the upcoming years. And so I'm working very closely with the city manager on a progressive and aggressive program on that. I never thought I'd be happy to get an audit, but I have recently been audited by the city auditor on this issue, and a lot of great recommendations have come from that. And so at the end of the day, what we need is a commitment to keep focused on high-level service delivery by investing in these men and women.
Thank you. I serve as the chair of the Audit Committee, so that was kind of a softball toss because I see it as a huge issue, and I want the city to be prepared. And thank you all for your service who are here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Council Vice Mayor Debaskas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, heroes, for coming out today. Thank you for choosing to serve Scottsdale, for taking care of us every day, for putting your lives on the line. We appreciate you. We think about you. We pray for you. And I think every single one of us would say that we are here to support you and provide everything that you need. So, thank you sincerely. Chief Shannon, thank you very much for this presentation. I was having a conversation with our mutual friend Carla today, and she was singing your praises, and she said that we have not had a major fire because of the hard work that you're doing. So please know that we appreciate you and value you, and we see the work that you do and that it's effective. So what I would ask is how are you doing as far as resources? Do you have the resources that you need? Is there anything else that we could provide for you?
I'm not going to look at the city manager while I answer this. So, Mayor, members of the council, so thank you for the question. Yeah, we're a well-resourced organization. We participate in the budget process. We're very happy. We have state-of-the-art equipment, as Captain Weller pointed out. We are doing what we think we need to do from the training and education perspective. What I would ask is just hold my feet to the fire to ensure that operationally we maintain the standards of service that the citizens expect from us by investing through the city manager's strategy that I am working with him on in order to make sure that these young men and women are prepared to take the mantle and keep our innovation moving forward. And so attrition is not abnormal in all of the workplace now, but the pace and the concentration of our potential loss is enormous. And so this is a predictable surprise. We've been working on it, and so just, I would say, hold me accountable.
Will do. Do you have any need for any more volunteers at this time?
I don't. We have 90, over 90 volunteers. Some of them are inactive. I'm quite sure that as we continue to develop our programming, we're going to light some folks up. But here's the thing about our volunteer program. It is open. You can volunteer tomorrow, and we will process you. We are hiring all the time. So if you want to be a firefighter, come test. We're ready to bring you into the organization. There's no age limit. So if you are my age and you want to give it a go...
Don't tempt me, Tom.
Yeah. So, no, I don't. If I was concerned about areas of program management that we couldn't get to, you would hear from me, and I assure you that you will in the future.
Thank you, Chief Shannon. You have our confidence.
Thank you.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for coming out tonight, and appreciate all the firefighters being here, like Vice Mayor Debaskas said. This was, we always like having you come out here. We like, you know, educating the public about what you guys do. We like showing you off, your competence. We, you know, I tend to agree. You said Scottsdale Fire is the crown jewel. I tend to agree with that. And I think that because we set the standard in the valley, perhaps nationally, if not regionally, if not nationally, the better we get, the more we push other fire departments across the state and across the country. Would you agree with that?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Graham, you're not going to ever hear me downgrade what the value of the firefighters in our organization can offer. I do believe we have the finest firefighters in this nation, and some of that is that DNA where they had to do more with less. And so the strength of their tenacity in providing services to, let's face it, we serve presidents, princes, and the general public, and so we have to be operationally very tight. And I'm always proud of the men and women here.
So what did the auditor find?
She says we're doing a great job. No, there's a lot of...
I trust you, but I'm going to verify that.
Yeah. There's a lot of room for improvement. We have succession planning in place, but it's scattered because we're kind of dealing with the crises in front of us at any given time. And so we're going to coagulate that together into a good program. And so I agree, you know, we can almost bypass the Audit Committee because I agree with the findings.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. We'll think about that. You said no age limit. My sons are four years old. What do you mean by no age limit?
Yeah, yeah. We'll see them in 16.
The, how many volunteers did you say we have? 90 or 100?
Well, over 90, yes.
Okay. If we wanted to add volunteers, do you have the authority to do that?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, yes, they need not only to come to the Scottsdale Fire Department and pull a card and ask to be a volunteer.
I guess what I'm saying is, do you need city council approval, or do you have the authority to incorporate or expand volunteers?
I don't think I do. It might be a question for the city attorney, but it's a policy decision, but I believe our volunteer program does not have limits.
I'm happy to join that conversation. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Graham, I believe once council sets the policy, the policy question is really volunteers in general. We lean into volunteers here, of course, for our organization. And after that, I really see it as implementation, which we assign to city manager, and in this instance, my support to the chief as the subject matter expert to deploy and support to the level that we have capacity, quite frankly. Because when you have, let's just say, for sake of discussion, 90 volunteers, that's a different management level than if you have 190 volunteers. And does that take resources away from the front lines of professional firefighters that we have within our organization? So I believe it's an operational item between the chief of fire and the city manager.
Yeah, so, okay, I hear what you're saying. If I'm understanding you correctly, you have the authority, you and the fire chief, to expand or incorporate or to do more if you so chose. I like the idea, just to kind of wrap my comments up to the time being, I do like the idea of, you know, hauling the fire chief down here on occasion and just educating the public. I always like the opportunity to, you know, brag about our heroes and kind of show them off a little bit. And, you know, we're going to do what, we're going to trust our professionals. And so what you say, we take very seriously. And I'm pleased to hear about your authority to expand or modify or do what you need to do to serve, like you called it, the crown jewel in the valley. So with that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I note the city attorney would like to say something.
Mayor, members of the council, I just want to add to the discussion. City manager and the fire chief are absolutely correct that they can sign up volunteers. But I do want to point out that volunteers are covered by workers' compensation, and it does require an act of the city council. Currently, there are city ordinances that provide for volunteers, so we're covered there. But if we added different categories of volunteers that perhaps were in a more hazardous type of role, we would have to probably change that and cover that. type of role, we would have to probably change that and cover that and increase our workers' compensation insurance.
So, I have a question about that because not, you said they're covered by workers' comp currently, but it would be different if Chief Shannon decided to add volunteers, understanding that he's directing traffic on what the volunteers do. So I didn't follow that.
Mayor and members of the council, sorry for the confusion. In terms of the types of volunteers he's contemplating, it would not require any sort of council action on the workers' comp, but if there were volunteer firefighters, for example, it would.
But currently, he's trusted with directing traffic on volunteers.
Correct, correct.
So that would be up to him if he changed anything dramatically.
Correct. But he'd have to bring it back to the council, yes.
The council, okay, got it. All right, Councilwoman Whitehead.
Can I just give a plug for volunteering at the food bank? You don't quite have the hero glow, but we need volunteers. So, and I've been there for, I don't know, six years. So, I do want to, you know, my biggest concern is what you mentioned answering Councilwoman McAllen's question. And I really, I guess I want to thank the voters for the bonds, for giving us a fire training facility. I think that's, are we seeing an increase in trainees that then can fill the ranks?
Mayor, members of the council, yes. I will tell you that our recruitment numbers are frankly leading the valley. It's much leaner than certainly a decade ago in terms of the number of folks who are interested in being firefighters. But even our City of Phoenix partners are seeing numbers that are lower than ours. So, I got to believe that we, it's because they see Scottsdale as a place where firefighters are supported. It's a great place to work. You get to do a lot of interesting things. And we are investing in our infrastructure. And so, I do think we're in a good place.
Well, that's great. And I guess I also want to thank the voters and also Sasha's group for Prop 490 because this is the first time you guys were applying for grants to protect the largest urban preserve from wildfire in the nation. That's just not how Scottsdale rolls. So I just really want to point out that Sasha's group, that a lot of you guys really helped to pass that, give us the funding we need. So, it seems to me like the NAOS, the changes to the NAOS, and I'm saying this more for the public's point of view, or the public's education, that is probably one of the most dramatic changes that we have made and has the most potential to reduce wildfires. So I think you have said, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you will, we have as much NAOS acreage as we do preserve acreage?
Mayor, members of the council, Luis is not here, but I think we have in excess of that acreage. So, that means that the border open space exceeds the interior of the preserve. That's stark.
It is stark. And I think what I've learned is that these, every now and then, there's a lightning strike, but what we're having is that human-caused fires, and those happen in areas where there's more humans. And so, this NAOS is often in neighborhoods and whatnot, or along roads, or different areas. We've had this unbelievable growth of invasive plants. And up till now, the neighborhoods, the HOAs, and residents were told they couldn't touch that. So that's, I just want you to stress that we're not only giving neighborhoods what they wanted, the right to keep those NAOS actually natural and actually native, but I really like the part where we're also giving authority to the fire chief to compel neighborhoods or private properties to do what is necessary to prevent the fires. So I just, you're very understated, but I just want to stress that, yes, we may be the top nationwide of the urban, wildland, urban interface, wooey, I think you call it. But there's so much more we can do with this updated ordinance, and I'm really excited about that. And also, the other thing I just really want to stress to people who have contacted me is that, you know, fighting fires is, that's great, but, I mean, that's exciting, it gets great news coverage, but the jobs that, to prevent the wildfires is more boring and actually harder work and requires more thought, and that's where we need those resources. And I'm just so pleased with all of you for doing that because, Lord knows, we just don't want the fires, and we want to catch them early, and so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Clausman.
We're allowed to do that.
There's no participation right now from the audience. No problem, thank you. Councilman Clausman.
First, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to really express the strength of the mustache game I am seeing in this room right now. Just outstanding. Now, thank you guys for all of it. I really appreciate it. My only comment was the following. It's that just, we didn't really get any, a lot of questions about the ground-based retardant, and I just want to express the general, I'm sure you're on it, concern of any potential long-term environmental impact that it might have, especially if sprayed in the preserve, making sure that our critters are taken care of. If there's any, we want to make sure that there's an environmental impact study on long-term ground contamination because you hit the ground, now you're hitting the bugs, and if you hit the bugs, you hit the birds. If you hit the birds, you hit predators, and so on and so forth. I know it has a lot more of a deleterious effect on aquatic systems, and it's not an issue in the preserve, but just want to throw that out there to make sure that we're always taking care of the critters. Thanks.
Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say thank you to all of you for all that you do. Long, long ago and far away, I was on the outside part of the people who put this fire department together and made it happen for the city of Scottsdale. And I know what they were thinking. I know they were planning. My husband was one of them. David Ortega was one. And you have so far surpassed what they thought we could do, that you have really, really made a difference here in Scottsdale. And I know my husband's very proud of that, and I imagine David is too, but you should be proud of yourselves for what you have accomplished in a relatively short amount of time in creating one of the best fire departments, I think, in the state of Arizona. So thank you from all of us for all you do for us and for our city. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Councilman Graham.
Nothing to comment, but I was just going to move to adjourn.
I just have a couple more points, but thank you for that. The Troon, I want to give a shout-out to Troon, big golf company here, as we all know. They had offered, as I believe the case is, to use their golf courses or their parking lots as a docking station, I don't know what the right term is, in the event of wildfires. Is there an update on your work with them?
Mayor, members of the council, no, I don't have an update except to say we absolutely want to continue to engage them, and it's an interesting collaborative, I believe APS intergov representation is assisting in that conversation. And it's not only, many of our golf communities occupy space that either can contribute to the hazard or help deter the hazard. And so, we absolutely are engaging in them, in those conversations. Perhaps my fire-wise captain, Steve Hunter, who's up here, do you have any updates on Troon at all? No, we'll get that back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, because I think that's a wonderful opportunity for us to get organized in that respect. And then, lastly, Councilman Clausman asked about the retardants, and I believe APS is already using them, this product in the preserve, which is what got my attention, focused on it. And I know you're aware of it. You had your assistant chief out at a presentation, I think, that was out in Rio Verde. And I was surprised to hear you say that there's some toxicity that could be of concern, but are you still looking into that? Is that, or is that...
Mayor, members of the council, absolutely. With every chemical product, there's always some environmental sensitivities that have to be taken into. I'm certainly not the expert in that. And so, it has been approved by the U.S. Forest Service. It will be used if we had a fire tomorrow from an aerial tactics perspective. And so, what the, I think the paradigm shift would be is if residents, or businesses, or public entities started to use those either preventatively or proactively during a firefight, and the frequency of that use increased, what would that have in terms of environmental impact? And so, I'm certainly not the expert on that, but we are going to continue to stay on top of it from a tactics perspective, and we'll engage the city stakeholders to make sure that they're looking at that as well.
Okay, and then my final question has to do, I didn't cover this earlier, but I understand from conversations with you and others that a lot of sparks or potential fires are created by construction sites that have permits that last twenty-four hours for, you know, grinding or whatever the case is, out on sites. And I know you've shared with me that you have volunteers that go and sit those, and I think we talked about maybe tightening that ordinance to allow for only a shorter period of time whereby you would be able to have volunteers out there, because I'm thinking, a question for you, do you have volunteers at every site that's approved for these permits right now?
Mayor, members of the council, we do not. And so, the multi-pronged attack that, if you recall, we had in your office that the city manager referred to includes making sure that our code enforcement matches our intentions of potential changes to the NAOS language and is sensitive to making sure that we have good knowledge of what's about to happen before it happens so that we can do appropriate site visits. And we're absolutely on that. The reality is that it's kind of like chicken or the egg. We've got to get good NAOS language to you. We've got to then couple that with good code enforcement language. We've got to work with our legal department on enforcement strategies, and so, it's a bit of a process, but we're on it. Now, I will say, to finish, that we were dogged this year about getting in front of those construction sites with those, the brush patrols. So the brush patrols, they don't arrive on duty and just sit in the station. They are out along the wooey, looking at those, and many stops occurred because of that. But the good news is, is the contractors got it. My PIO did a great job of dramatically saying, "Please don't burn down our preserve," and I think we got their attention. And then, that coupled with good site visits, kind of got everybody thinking about, "Hey, we're going to be watching." And so, I can't put my finger on which one has made the difference, but less than twenty-four acres, I'll take.
Great. And this for the suggestion box, I think it was a builder that shared this with me. The current fines, I guess this is a Luis, potentially, a Luis, city manager, thought, the fines are really not proportionate to what the potential damage is. And the suggestion, this from a builder, was to take a look at increasing fines for violations. And I really don't even know what the violations look like, but they can be catastrophic if someone gets, starts a fire and lets it go, or doesn't, you know, just starts a fire. So that was just a suggestion that I heard we might want to consider looking at.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have nothing further. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. And for the gentleman that asked to speak, you may not have been here earlier, there is a public comment, a period during agendized items and non-agendized items, and that would require you to sign up to speak, and I'm sorry you missed that opportunity, but please come back and talk to us again. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn because we have no other business.
Without objection.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks for coming, everybody.